A little snow on the way back.
Revenues.
I was coming in like I am.
I love to bake. I mean, I've made it for East Park in the car. I do it all the time. That's why Greg knows my cookies.
I'm bringing Ali's help me out when my.
Yeah, he said that my last batch helped him out. No, I I love to bake. It's kind of my thing like to. What I do. So I I seem like I'm always making cookies. My neighbor agrees even though he says.
We should be there.
I take cookies out almost every week.
When do you have time?
I it's my son. I I'm telling you, I don't, but it's just my I mean that it's my I like to bake. It's. It's I hate cooking, but I like to bake.
Does anyone else like hard coffee?
You know, I I brought my iPad because I was bringing this this meeting, but it's not up. It's not it's not updating. So it's not refreshing. It's like ten fourteen twenty one.
Yeah, if you have one, I I like hard copies.
Will give me a bill for my water connection. That's why I lost. Thanks, buddy.
Did anyone else?
You're right. I can wait. You need to come up with a petition.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. Oh, I got some intruders. Put my hand out.
Yeah, make make a request. All right, all right. I call to order the Adrian City Commission's special meeting for March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty two. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hope. Mr. Roberts.
President.
Mr. Miller.
President.
Mr. Strayer's answer. Mr. Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present with the exception of Mr. Strayer, who is on Zoom, and Commissioner Castleberry.
May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Castleberry and Commissioner Strayer?
So moves.
And a motion from Commissioner Help with the second from Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Motion to excuse Mr. Strayer. Mr. Castleberry is approved by. Five to zero vote.
Resolution R twenty two dash zero eighteen is from this clerk. It is a resolution to extend commercial commercial marijuana facilities permit renewal application period. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move adopt resolution?
Or.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Help with the second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by a five yes zero vote.
Moving on to our work session regarding fiscal year two thousand twenty two, twenty three budget and capital improvement program. And I will now turn it over to city administrator Greg Elliott for that.
Thank you, Mayor. So we're going to go department by department and with respect to our major departments, most significant impact. Proposed budget. We have put a budget in front of you that is balanced and. Does not rely on fund balance to balance itself. Good thing because we didn't start out that way. We started out about a million seven in the last. After all the departmental requests came in. So we've got it in line right now and. As I say, each department will go through and kind of explain the highlights of what's new or different or significant about their particular requests this year. Since Will always does the most awesome summary. His reward is to go first this year.
Thank you. Of course, if anybody wants to look, the funds that I have are four nine six, four nine seven. Those are the two capital funds. And then five nine zero and five nine one are the operating funds. If if you want to go line by line or have any questions on any particular line, feel free to ask me, but I I'd just like to put a summary together to make things. Go a little bit quicker. So I'll start with the sewer side and I've broken it down into. The wastewater plant with stations. And for the most part, I just compared last year's budget to the proposed budget for next year. For example, wastewater, an increase in expenditures of about fifty eight thousand dollars. And then two of the two of the big reasons for that is just an increase in wages. And increase in operating supplies for equipment maintenance. Everybody knows that prices are not going down on anything. It's going up pretty much all over the all over the board. Sanitary sewers, a reduction actually of about fifty four thousand dollars. And that includes twenty five thousand dollars reduction in contract services and in repair and operating supplies. We're trying to do a lot more of the repairs in house. And we've done a lot of work with sewer lining over the last, you know, ten years. So there's a lot more sewers that we're not having to repair on a on a annual basis. So we're able to kind of reduce the the costs on on those supplies. Admin overhead increase from the previous year about eighty six thousand. Increase of pension contribution and healthcare, social security. And property insurance are the biggest reasons for that increase in in on the sewer side. As far as capital projects go. The big one this year is we're going to purchase another a new vector. Our oldest factor is two thousand and six. So that's due to be replaced. Getting fifteen, sixteen years on a piece of equipment like that is really good. So it cleans sewers. It's like a giant vacuum truck. It'll jet clean sewers. We also use it for hydro excavation. So if we're digging up, if if we're in a hurry to dig up around a curb box or another repair, we can hydro excavate rather than get the backhoe out. So that piece of equipment will be about five hundred thousand dollars. We'll either go through the bid process internally or we'll do one of the. My my deal bid or the source well. I think there's a source well bid package out there right now. So that complete purchase is five about five hundred thousand dollars. We'll spend two hundred on the sewer side and three hundred thousand on the water side. The last time we purchased a vector was we did it through at least a five year lease. This way, we'll we'll probably save eighty thousand dollars of finance charges by just buying it. We have a pretty healthy fund balance, so it just it just makes sense to buy it. We've kind of been saving up for it anyway.
And for like Doug, you know, because Doug's the new commissioner, like so like your fund is different than a general fund. So you don't you don't take out. You have your own fund.
Yeah, good point. Our fund is it's enterprise fund, so all of our. Expenses are through water and sewer rates. We don't use any general fund money. The other filter media replacement at the wastewater treatment plant. That is the tertiary treatment at the plant. That's the last. That's the polishing step in the plant. And the last time the filter media was replaced was probably two thousand three, two thousand four. Typically, you're going to get about twenty years of life on that. And we're starting to notice in the summertime that we're having a harder time. We're getting some organic growth in there. So it's it's time to just replace that. And that's sand and coal. It's that finest final polishing step for the wastewater. So we're estimating that would be about two hundred fifty thousand dollars for that replacement. So that'll be a we'll bid that project out. Mobbie Street Pump Station, that pump station was built and put in service in nineteen ninety seven. There's three pumps in there. Twenty year lifespan for those pumps is pretty average. We've already replaced two of them. So this this will be the third and final pump in that station. So we've got, you know, close to twenty five years of life on that pump. And then the fume hood in the lab needs to be replaced. And that's just, you know, the whole high school labs. That's where you do all your chemical mixing underneath so that it vent the fumes out to the. Outside that was installed in two thousand and in two thousand. So it's time to replace that. And then we have our typical annual capital items, including valves, hearing place projects, manhole restoration, UV equipment, neck, that kind of stuff. So there's nothing. Else that's different than what we always put in there every year. Fixed expenses, slight reduction or a reduction in the fixed expenses. And those expenses do include. The J the Johnson Controls Project payment. And this year, we don't have that final vector lease payment. And last year, that payment was a hundred sixty thousand dollars. So that's why that's reduced quite a bit. So at the end of the day, two hundred sixty six thousand dollars more in expenses this year proposed over last year. And as of today, our fund balance sits at about four point three million dollars. So we're in pretty good shape so we can, you know, do some of these projects like buy back or truck. And and so forth. Any questions on sewer? Water pump, set it up the same way. Water treatment plant, sixty thousand dollars more in expenditures, including about forty five thousand more in wages. And twenty thousand dollar increase in chemical costs. And hopefully that will cover it. We are. We did budget three hundred thousand dollars again this year to remove line from that back lagoon. So. That's normally we budgeted about two hundred thousand, but the last two years we budgeted. Want to try to get that cleaned out. Transmission distribution. This is the water main crew. Again, increase in wages, overtime. And contract services. We're doing a lot of work with people helping us out doing some of these service line replacements. And things like that. And our our policy is that if someone doesn't have water, we don't go home until they do. So we're we're seeing, you know, sometimes it takes a little bit more overtime costs to keep people here to get that stuff taken care of. Because we don't want to leave somebody without water for the night. I'm not asking for any new employees, but I do have currently I have what's called a GIS tech or engineering tech position. That person left last fall. What I'd like to do is convert that to another crew leader position because it's just a lot more flexible. That person can do a lot more work out at the field. Whereas a GIS person is just basically an office person who takes care of, you know, collecting our GPS data and so forth. Having another crew leader will kind of be more flexible in the field. And these these guys can actually go out and shoot their own GPS points and stuff like that. So it's not really adding a new position. It's just converting one position to another. Admin and overhead. Again, it's mostly an increase in pension contribution. Healthcare and social security. I know we haven't had any healthcare increases in what, five years? And this is the first one we've seen in 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 that time amount of time.
You have the same number for twenty one, twenty two.
Oh, yeah, there's no difference. Oh, sorry. That is a typo. So the I'm sure the twenty one, twenty two is correct. So. The twenty two, twenty three would just be add to one twenty eight. Yeah, good catch. Thank you for that. Capital projects. Again, the backer purchase will be the three hundred thousand dollars on top of the two hundred. We'll bid out another service truck. And the water plant needs a new lawnmower. Those are three things that are atypical. Everything else that's in the capital budget are normal items, valves, actuators, lab equipment. We always budget a large dollar amount for service line replacements and water main construction, usually. Two to four hundred thousand dollars for each of those, just to do that kind of work in house or bid out. Fixed expenses were down a little bit. Again, that's mostly because of our bond payment interest is a lot less this year. And that does include the Johnson Controls payment of a hundred sixty one thousand. So. Three hundred ninety thousand more in expenses, but a big chunk of that is for that factor of three hundred thousand. And again, our fund balance as of this morning was just over four million dollars. So again, I think we're in pretty good shape and allows us to do some of these projects. And the last last page just rate increases. I'm going to recommend a just a three percent increase in rates. I'd like to always keep it three to five percent every year. That way you're not, you know, doing really low rates and all of a sudden hitting people with the ten or twelve like we had to do back, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago. A three percent rate weight rate increase would equate to about two dollars and thirteen cents a month or twenty five dollars a year for the average residential customer. And then I included a historic rate increases since two thousand and fourteen. And you can see we're right in that three to five percent range each year. In in the last eight years. To in twenty twenty, we did not have a great increase because that's when it started COVID. So we thought we better just kind of dial that back a little bit.
How do we rate compared to other communities?
The last time I looked, it was probably two thousand seventeen. We are smack dab. We're right. Yep.
So how much of the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars? That's your budget and extra will come from that rate increase? And how much will come from your?
The fund balance, I think on each side, I think it was looking at. Four sixty six on the water side. And then the sewer side shows more, but that's kind of a it shows nine sixty four, but that's a bit of a deceiving number because we fund depreciation, which is one point five million. To cover our bond payments, which are only a million. So it's not. It's not really a use of fund balance of that. It's an extra five hundred thousand. Nathan can explain it better than I can. No, probably. It's it's a cash flow thing. We have to account for, but we don't spend it. Does that make sense? We fund depreciation.
Right.
Exactly. And with this meter project that's wrapping up, it's too early to tell how that's going to affect what we collect in revenue. Obviously, the whole point of that was to be able to recoup some of the older meters that were not registering all the flow through them. I don't have good data yet. I mean, we're still we're going to be done. Ninety to ninety five percent done this week, and then the contractor is moving out of town. So we're going to we're going to be left with the with the cleanup work, which is going to be about four to five hour. More meters to do. They're just meters that we we just couldn't get to because of bad plumbing or people just weren't. Scheduling appointments, those kind of things. So it's hard to tell what that's going to do in terms of revenue.
The new meters that you installed, are you seeing? Increased bills, same same level of bills?
It it's still too early to tell, really. We we. Started replacing meters last June. So we're essentially this is the end of the tenth month. Most of those were installed probably in the fall time, you know, like September through November. So it's still kind of we're still kind of putting stuff together.
But you're feeling that. The usage is more accurate with the new meters?
It will be. It will be absolutely more accurate. When they did the study, they showed that our residential meters were on average only recording about seventy eight percent of the flow. These new meters are guaranteed ninety nine percent accurate for fifteen years. So realistically, I don't know if we're going to see a full fifteen percent improvement in what's being used, but we should see a significant. We just need the data. Any questions?
Makes sense.
Summary does for you.
You may see one that looks very similar to.
We're trying to increase everybody. It helped a lot.
Most of our budgets have three or four hundred line items. You do not care how much we supply on office supplies. I I mean, I don't think you care.
Todd Brown used to go line by line.
Remember his ruler? Get his ruler off.
I'm sure. Your friends.
I think work will.
No, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Not until six o'clock. Keep moving.
Don't last now, Vince.
Hey, I'm good to go.
Five minutes.
You got a summary for us?
I'm sorry. I don't have a summary. My whole budget is a summary. I don't have. Four hundred line item. That only got about seventy.
All that stuff. Please do.
All right. Wow, I'm already. Well, that's that's terrible. Good evening. I so so you all have our normal budgets then or?
Yeah, okay, all right. So I was go. They'll be on page two for his revenues and page five for his expenditure. Okay.
And then they also have our five year samples.
Okay.
From there, I'll probably do this here.
Okay. Very good. Where where do you want to start? Capital? Sure. Okay, capital is pretty straightforward for us. Vehicles is the big one that we have. Difficult to budget for. The order process has changed. The expense has gone way up and they can't. Really give you an exact number, so they they give you kind of a ballpark percent. So that's why that changes year to year. We have two vehicles in to be replaced this year in rotation. As far as other items. You know, the rifles that I present year to year, the Vietnam era that everyone saw. Narrated with, I'll finally be able to be done telling that story. We we set the bids out and we'll be. Bringing a resolution to request that we award that bid. You can get that project resolved. This year's budget, correct. We we had some money in this year for furniture. Some of our chairs have worn out. We'll be replacing those. And then we had. Someone in for flooring. When they built our building, all of the carpet went through. It's the same carpet upstairs and down. Which is fine. And in ninety eight percent of those areas, it looks brand new. But in that two percent where you walk from where the cars are to where the computers are, that start to. Wear out. So we were looking at putting something a little more durable. Is that in? You get a funny looking face, man. I think that went into your budget.
I think it was supposed to.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not showing up.
It's probably not in ours. We probably put it on the.
In the building on six six three.
The the big ask. A week from tonight, I will ask that we accept grant for our body cams. They are awarding us the full amount, which is sixty six thousand that we're eligible for. And that's that's a big deal. That's a replace that we needed. Plays into my operational budget in that some of these line items we can. Nathan, if we will combine those. Currently, I have a line item for body cam replacement. Any items that could be broken, lost, whatever the case may be. And then I have another line item that is Taser replacement. The vendor that we want to go with also owns Taser. So you can do a bundle and save on on both items. And then we can hopefully combine those line items. That's that's essentially our our capital. Was there any questions on any of those?
Do we use dash cam?
We do not have dash cams. In two thousand fifteen, our dash cams were starting to break down and they were about six thousand a piece per vehicle. So at the time, we went and made the switch to body cams, which are about six hundred a piece. So we could assign them to each officer and catch about ninety percent more of the the action if we're wearing the thing as opposed to pointing straight ahead. It was a it was a cost prohibitive thing. We didn't want to spend that much at the time. Now they have integrated systems where you can have both. And all of the video will save in one location, which is something we absolutely want to look at going forward. They also build in license plate readers into the. Mobile cameras, which is something we might explore later. But that's those are all things that we can build into this vendor if we want to increase. Going forward, but it's a it's a big bite. The cameras for a five year plan is a hundred and eighty eight thousand. So it's a it's a big deal. And I didn't want to throw in those. Just yet until we see how the whole system works out. The. Problems, this will solve a whole lot of problems, but I don't know if we want to get into that in this right now or should we wait till next meeting week from today?
Yeah. I would like you to touch with Ken on kind of what we're going to explore with enterprise.
Okay, um, Seth, this is Fred, right? Thursday? Yeah, remember, we have a we have a Zoom presentation from Enterprise. Because they're now offering marked vehicles as part of their lease program. So we have we have eight unmarked vehicles. We have five or excuse me, we have eight marked vehicles, five unmarked vehicles. Right now, we are buying our marked vehicles through the state bid my deal program. And we are leasing the unmarked vehicles through Enterprise. The way things are now, Enterprise is wanting to present to us that there can be a savings if we rotate our. Regular marked police vehicles through as leases instead of purchases. Because right now we take them, we use them for the five years, and at the end they are toast. And if we get a couple thousand bucks, then that's great. If we haven't spent a month, a bunch of money to keep them running in that last year, that's great too, but that's usually not the case. So what Enterprise is proposing is that we rotate through leased vehicles. They will do the outfit and that we will do it in a shorter interval so that when we turn them back in, there's residual value that can then. Those things can be sold and then that money applied to lease. So the payment comes down. So Matt and I have been talking with our representative. Obviously, we wanted to to get certainly Nathan and Greg involved. So there's going to be a presentation on Friday to see if that makes sense for us. There's a number of cities that do it that way right now, and they're saying that they can save us a bunch of money. Bring it to me.
Does it cost anything with them?
The idea would be to utilize that for all of. Possible.
All right. So I apologize. I didn't know summary was the order of the day. I summarized on mine. I'll know for next year. So I only have about ten line items where where there's a major change, but please stop me if there's questions or anything. There's not really a whole lot going on on the revenue side. That's that's a very dramatic shift. I did wish to point out that all of our parking fines are now collected through courts. And we have officially solved that problem. I have been hesitant for years. To say that we've solved it because sometimes things come back, but this has been running smoothly for for. More than a year now, and I'm very happy with the way it's going. So so we still issue our standard paper ticket. People still, some people still ignore them like they do. And when that happens, then we issue a standard uniform citation. Which is routed through the court, which then the court comes after the person for that fine to to pay that. So. For the person becomes more expensive if they ignore it. For us, we collect about the same amount either way. So either they pay it in the first. Two, three weeks, we would collect twenty five dollars on the citation. If that doesn't happen, if they ignore it, if they throw it away, whatever the case may be, and we send it to the court, they wind up paying seventy five at the court and we get twenty one sixty on that. So it's it's about a wash for us. But if they don't pay it through the court, then there's sanctions. The court has a collection agency that handles after the person. So there's some teeth to to go after that.
Does it affect their registration or their licenses?
It does not. It does not because it's not a moving violation. But it definitely. You know, when the court sends you a letter and when their collection agency is calling, it certainly has more. Teeth than the postcards we sent out historically. So. We collect on a much higher percentage of those. And in turn, the ultimate goal is to change the behavior and and we have that. So. You know, unfortunately, the kids come back in fall. We write a bunch of tickets and then a month later, nobody's. The idea is is to get the message out and it's it's definitely seemed to be doing that. Towing impound fees had dropped for COVID because we had we were making fewer stops. We were limiting our contacts. Those should go back up again now that we're back to. Um, those should go back up again now that we're back to, uh, business as usual. Um, sale of equipment, lights, uh, six eighty-five. I have that highlighted, and I left it as a zero, because the only equipment that we really intend to sell is, uh, the used vehicles that we have as unmarked, once Enterprise is able to deliver on the new leases. When that happens, uh, we have a number of options in terms of what we do with those cars. Um, I mean, obviously, we get someone to the auction like we had done at Stark Lake, we can send them with Enterprise, which then sells them in their market, and then applies that money to our lease. So I left it blank, because I'm not sure, uh, what, what direction we want to take when that comes, I, I, uh, just guessing, I think that by the numbers Enterprise throws out, that they'll be able to get a higher dollar amount if we send it with them, there's, they have a bigger market, but, um, that remains to be seen. Uh, under expenditures, I think you said page five?
Yep.
So, under expenditures, there's three line items, um, that have increased with the intention of sponsoring candidates. Um, it's been very difficult to attract police recruits recently. Um, the good candidates that we have, good local students that we have hired, they're not licensed with the state, they haven't gone to the police academy. It's a big expense, it's a lot of time, it's a lot of commitment. So we have been, um, signing contracts with people and sending them, sponsoring them to go, so we pay their tuition, you pay them a wage, and when they come out, they graduate in our uniform, ready to start youth training, which is a great opportunity for those students, because I remember back then, I, had I not been a sponsored candidate, I wouldn't be sitting here right now, because you can't go to the police academy and work a job, and pay your bills, and keep an apartment, there's just no way. So, we have people, we're, we're sponsoring two candidates right now in, uh, the police academy, and we're doing it out of rescue funds. Now, we've had conversations, Nathan and I have had conversations, that it's likely that that money will be available next year for the same purpose, but if for some reason it's not, I have, I have budgeted to sponsor two candidates, if that's not the case. Um, three years from now, four years from now, when we, when we don't have that option, this will be the way that I have to do it. Uh, so I'm programming it in now, and if we don't use it, then we don't use it, but at least it's there. So those three lines, uh, it's wages and uniforms, which is seven four three, because we have to outfit them, uh, when we send them. And then the training line item, which is nine five seven. So those are the, the increases in those three lines. The, uh, line items I had mentioned that we might be able to, um, combine or eliminate, if, should we accept the grant and, uh, purchase new body cameras, uh, that is seven four four, which is taser replacement, and seven four nine, which is body cam replacement. There would also, uh, likely be a change in IT services. If we don't have to continually, uh, expand our server to hold the data, because this is going to be a cloud-based program. There's a number of other savings that will be difficult to calculate in that, uh, cloud base, the prosecutor will be able to access the videos directly, I won't have to, uh, pay someone to save it to a flash drive and drive it over there every morning, all the cases from the night before. Um, Michelle won't have to redact our videos, because all of those tools will be built in. Lots of, uh, lots of things that are difficult to calculate. The, uh, only other line item I had made on here to make note of was the IT services, you'll see that we've had quite an increase over the last several years. Reason being, a lot of the software that we use is now subscription-based. Um, we had, for, for years, we had used a program called, uh, LEA Data Technologies. Uh, we referred to it as the admin suite, and basically, it was the, uh, early warning software for employees. So it tracked discipline, use of force, things that, uh, might throw up a red flag if there was a lot of events under one person, and then you would get a notification, but it would also document all of the events that you needed to document, maintain. That crashed early this year and dumped half of our data, which was a really traumatic thing. We had to do our best to rebuild the database, uh, the reason we liked that software so much, because it was a, it was a one-time thing, you buy it and then you own it, and you can use it as long as you want. Sadly, anything you go for now is, is an annual expense, so we pay about ten thousand dollars now for a product called Benchmark. Fantastic software, fantastic software, documents everything, good and bad, everything that you need, but goes right into this here, so it, it becomes an annual expense, so that is, uh, unfortunate, but I am, uh, very happy with the product that we have. That's essentially all I wanted to mention. Anything that I can answer?
Hey, it's good move, dude, that's the right direction to get people going, monitoring people in the academy, I know it's harder for the smaller departments to do that, but. I, I think that's the way to go, where you're not relying on people transferring from other. Create new positions, new people.
It's, uh, it's almost impossible to do it otherwise, uh, we used to draw in our fair share of people who were licensed, but there are so many vacancies, you can literally, uh, open the website, and you can pick any, any agency in the state, and you'll get a job there.
I see the number changing from two in the future, possibly?
That's, uh, i- i- it's possible, uh, certainly something I have to talk about in the coming years, uh, in twenty twenty-four, we have four people who become retirement eligible on the same two months, one time. So planning ahead and getting people trained and ready to fill those spots when, when most people go, that'll be difficult, that'll be something we gotta try and plan.
How long does a applicant, or scholarship student stay in the academy? What's the length of it?
Academy's about four months. Yeah, so, uh, right now, we have, uh, people we sent that started in, uh, mid-January, where they'll be graduating the first week of May. We'll start them on FTO, which can be between four and six months, so. Total start to finish, if they, if they're not a licensed police officer, through completion of our FTO, can be about ten months, maybe even a year. People need extensions, which sometimes they do.
Where are you getting the applicants?
Well, we've, uh, been recruiting hard at, uh, Sienna, Adrian College, uh, Jackson College is going to be starting a new program, which they've invited us to be on the board, so, uh, we're trying to stay local, because what we found is, now, when, when there's vacancies everywhere, people who are leaving are leaving closer to home, so. Had a near miss, an officer was in the process, uh, wanted to go to Milford, because that's where he was from, but, um, things didn't work out, so. Their losses are.
Do you believe just people not wanting to go, less people wanting to go in that profession nationally? Would that be a part of the problem, or?
Yeah, yeah, I would say that's a big piece of it, we'll see.
Last two years, I've.
I had a friend that's a, he's a sergeant in Titusville, Florida, he's at the same angle, they can't get people, you know, get them to go to apply, let alone, you know, stick around for multiple years, so it's tough.
We, uh, we occasionally, uh, get lectures at Sienna Heights, and the kids in, the number of kids in the classroom has gone way down.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
I've heard everything I need to hear. Oh, no, I need, I have another meeting, so, thank you so much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Even if you didn't have a phone.
I'll, I'll.
You could go, you could.
Well, I, I paid special attention to IT this year, if you remember, last year you asked, and I wasn't a hundred percent on the answer. We, uh, we've had a lot of hardware improvements, monitors and whatnot, but, uh, the real expenses, they. And, uh, the reason Exxon is the vendor, Exxon's bought everything up, I mean, we have, our cameras are, are a company called Beavie, which was bought by Safari Land, which was then bought by Exxon, so then they discontinued, so now, even if we wanted to keep going, we can't, because they control, uh, the cameras and the, they, they stuff, which is, which is why we also want to bundle our taser, because we have the X-two model taser being discontinued, so they won't support it. Um, they won't, they won't repair or replace, so you have to go with now the X-seven, which. It's frustrating, but, um.
Good, thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks chief.
He was out there on this. Yeah, he got that. He got that, so, so I'm walking around.
Thank you, this is funny.
What's that?
You get another cookie?
Hello?
I thought it was the ballpark, really.
What if I do? Yeah, oh, yeah.
I just told you, I thought it was there two thirty in late in the place.
Sovereign, is it a sovereign?
Yes, it is, it, yes.
Oh, my God. My heart beats so.
There's like grass and, and graphics.
Oh, you got all kinds of time.
He made his class, but.
I think you're happening, actually, for the most part, but.
Yeah, sure. You have extras.
Think about how many to make.
If you have one, I'll get it.
Okay. Alright. Are we ready?
Yeah.
Alright.
Whoa.
Hey, so, uh, first, what if we look at the, uh, replacement schedule, uh, for the vehicles, one without. Uh, so, what I've tried to do every year is give everybody an idea of what, uh, what we're going to look like, because the fire department is usually the most expensive for capital, uh, projects, I say most expensive, maybe sewers are expensive, but when we're talking vehicles and that sort of thing, it goes far beyond what, what anybody else does. So, I try to keep a twenty-five-year plan, just so we don't get behind and, and project. Uh, so if you look twenty-five, over the next twenty-five years, you're going to be looking probably about ten million dollars, um, to keep fire apparatus on the road, uh, fire apparatus, any of them, so, so I just throw that out there, just so everybody can see where we're at, where we're looking. Um, it, it is an expensive endeavor to run a fire department and a EMS service, so, any questions on that? Look it over.
You guys know what remount means? Because I just learned this.
Yeah.
On a tour on Friday at Wansing Community College.
Okay. Oh.
Is it remount?
Yep.
Remount, like a bunch of these have ambulance with two asterisks, to remount.
No, what does that mean?
So, the, unless you want to know.
Well, you, you essentially, you take the box, the body, which is still good, and you mount it to a new chassis and engine, because it's really the engine that fails, it's not any of the, the stuff inside of it, the box is just fine.
Yeah, that's exactly, that, we purposely, if you remember, when we bought the last two ambulances, we purposely bought, uh, the most expensive ambulances, because in the long run, we want to save money. The entire box was made out of aluminum. Uh, so there's one, one EMS agency that's remounted, the kind we bought sixteen times, on sixteen chassis's, right? And so therefore, we're not buying all that metal and all the labor to build it again. They're basically taking it, putting it in a chassis, and not only saving a lot of money, but also a lot of time to get it back on the road. So, the one we, our oldest one is not one that we'll want to remount, so we'll have to, uh, that's why it's more expensive than when we look to start remounting, um, is because that one was not made out of all the aluminum in the box itself, it was made out of a lot of wood, and, um, like plywood, it's glued and, and pressed together, bouncing down the road over the last thirteen, fourteen years, it's wearing out. Um, so, that's why we're not looking at remounting the next one, but then after that, as long as all goes well, then we'll be able to save money over time, remounting, so, yeah. The same with, uh, if you look at truck tour, the third one down, the aerial platform.
That's what I was going to ask you about, because the cost went down, so I was confused.
So it went down about a million dollars.
Yeah, I was really confused when I was looking at that.
Yep, so, if you, uh, if you buy new today, it's about, and you never know what the price is going to be, but about one point two, one point three million dollars to replace our ladder truck with basically what we have. Um, we've done a lot of research, and we're, we still have more to do, but we're really leaning towards, uh, remanufacturing that one. Um, when we were looking for an engine, that we'll talk about, uh, here in a few minutes, we went to the factory where actually our ladder truck was built, and got a good idea about what that's going to take, uh, or what that could be for us to, to actually, uh, refurb it, as opposed to buy new. Um, and we're really satisfied, uh, because of the quality, once again, the quality that was bought initially, it was paid for upfront, and we really think, uh, the ladder itself has a thirty-year warranty from the factory. The, uh, they're such highly, high quality, that that ladder, it goes up ninety-five feet a year, right? It's pretty, pretty, uh, a lot of liability there, if something goes wrong. If we send it back to the factory, they'll actually recertify it for another thirty-year warranty. So that's, that's the quality that was bought initially. Um, so we're really looking at leaning towards just doing a, a refurb on that, because it's, it's still a good truck, but it, it's getting up to twenty-five years old, and it needs some work. Uh, so that's why that really decreased.
Okay.
Because the money was spent upfront to get a really good truck, so we're really thinking that's where we're headed, so. Um, yeah, but as you can see, it's, there's nothing cheap about fire apparatus. Um, we're told by most manufacturers, this was two years ago, to figure eight percent every year increase. Um, I can tell you, I talked to the manufacturer that made the ambulances, um, they had our last one, and he said, over the last year and a half, it's went up twenty-five percent by an ambulance. We don't think that's going to go on forever. Um, I said, do everything is going to come down, and he said, I don't foresee, and this is what all the manufacturers are saying, they don't see it coming down. They see it maybe holding steady, and not increasing maybe for a couple of years to kind of catch up, but nobody knows what's going to happen, but this is the best we can do for at least giving you an idea of twenty-five years, uh, where we're going to be, because it's not, it's not cheap, so. Other questions?
So you've talked, I remember last year, we were talking about, you know, we bought the new ambulance, so like, so you pretty much got everything now, in a cycle, you pull, you pretty much amortize that over the course of, like, like we have here, and you budget a certain amount of chunk every year for replacement costs, is that what I'm, I'm reading this right?
So, so that's what it would cost, I don't know exactly how we pulled it out, but we did last year, and some more, but.
Yeah, I mean, all of this should then be programmed into the five-year rolling capital plan, so that there's an amount in there each year. Efficient, when we get to that actual replacement year that was there, now, as it relates to the one that's. This year, we did do that.
Right.
So for the engine, uh, we put aside half of that, this year's budget, um, put in the other half around.
I have a ridiculous question, goes back to when I did the ride along, you made a lot of trips to the hospital, the hospital's further away now. Is that going to result in premature replacement, I mean, that increased distance, more mileage, is that going to have any effect?
I, I can't say no. I can't say no, but I can tell you that we get reimbursed by the mile. So even extra miles, we'll get reimbursed for that. So it's probably a wash, I would say.
Have you adjusted those reimbursement rates for the increase in fuel costs?
Not yet. So we get actually a recommendation from our billing service. And so we don't, we don't for say change the rates up and down. So Medicare and Medicaid tell us, this is how much you get. You can bill us a million dollars and this is how much you get. Most of the insurance companies are the same way. They tell you, we're paying this amount of money.
We take what they'll give us.
Exactly. So for the most part, we can adjust our rates and it's not gonna do a whole lot for us. So.
That makes sense.
Soon, I think usually about July, they come out with like, our billing company says, this is what we recommend by everybody in the state of Michigan. You know, and and we can go higher, we can go lower, but we usually try and stay pretty even. So.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. Anybody else? So moving to the second sheet, the, so the engine is at the top. So we've done a lot of research last September. We started doing a lot of research. There's five on the, on the truck committee, started researching what we needed a new engine. Came up with, like I said, trying to find what's gonna last, what's going to be able to. To serve. Right now, we're putting a lot of money every year in maintenance costs and we wanna stop that or or reduce it. So we did a lot of research, came up with a, a set of specs. To get a new engine right now, it's six hundred sixty one thousand dollars, just less than six hundred sixty one thousand. We had thought two years ago when we put in the budget, if we did. Three hundred twenty five each year, give us six fifty, we'd be close. We actually thought, because we didn't know price wise, six eighty this year, but we now know we can back that down. The thing that actually put us over six fifty is I didn't realize this until we toured factory that. Airbags inside the cabs are optional. To me, it's something that shouldn't be optional. So we put that in the specs and that actually put us above the six fifty. But to me, it was, I I hope we never have an accident. But to me, that just didn't make sense to leave those out. So that's what actually put us above the six fifty. So in this current year budget, we budgeted three twenty five. We're requesting use three hundred and thirty six to buy a new engine or to be the second half of that out of the ARPA funds. So that's where we're looking at. Now. We we bring that up for next year's budget, but as everybody knows, stuff's going crazy, prices are going crazy. So I I talked to Greg and Nathan and what we're looking at using is a, like the Sourcewell or the Mydeal. It's called an HGAC buy. It's a prebid, it's actually out of Houston, Yellowstone area. And there was, I can't remember how many, but there's a ton of places and municipalities in Michigan that use the same thing. So we, we looked at that and we found out that they had prebid our engine under old prices, like before the price increase. But that price increase is only good till like real early in in April. So they said, hey, we, I said, you know, how long is this for? They said, and they gave me a date, it's early in April. So we're like, okay, so what if we wait? How much is it gonna go up? And they said, we don't know. Because literally daily prices are changing. So I guess that's kind of where, like you said, I talked to Greg and Nathan, we just kind of wanna. Get a feeling, since it's ARPA funds, is that something we wanna try and move ahead with now before there may be a price increase or?
Usually we try not to make purchases until budgets.
Right.
Prove from which we're using funds, but in this case, to take advantage of that fixed price. Before we would ever spend money, obviously. I wanted Eric to come and discuss it with you first, at least be as the advantage of talking to you first. To be. Comfortable as that will do that, that we won't actually be spending funds.
Yeah, so even.
Future before we take delivery.
Yeah, even if we ordered it today, it's twenty four to twenty six months to. Yeah, so so even if we say go today, normally it's about nine or ten months, but. That's what the industry is running, twenty four to twenty six months to, if we order today. So really, it wouldn't be next budget year, it'd be the budget year after before. Unless there are options for like prepayment, if you wanna put twenty five percent down, you save. You could save. Forty seven hundred dollars and then for every twenty five percent up to a hundred percent prepayment. You can say eighteen, almost nineteen thousand dollars. So it's all options. I mean, we can say, you know. If you wanna move forward, we'll wait and pay for it when it shows up, which is completely fine. Or there is, you know, steps of prepaying. So but if we strictly said we'll pay for it when it shows up, it's gonna be twenty four to twenty six months away. And like I said, that price is guaranteed until the. But it was for thirty days and that was the eleventh of March. So I said. You know, is it gonna go up? And they said, we don't know. So it may or may not. But.
My thought is, I mean, we knew this was coming. We already talked about it. We were gonna, you know, need to get this new engine. I I guess my thought is. Strike while attack because I think it's gonna go up because look at the car prices, they're all going up, everything's going up like. And, you know, let's get that locked in, you know, and I mean, it's not. I I don't think it hurts anything to get it locked in. I mean, it helps us. So I mean, that's my opinion.
I understand the numbers. I mean, you wait until after the deadlines and it goes up ten percent, you're talking sixty thousand now.
Yeah.
And that's real money.
That's.
So.
Yeah.
I, I'd be.
Two years ago, I would have said, it'll never go up ten percent, but hey, I have no idea.
And this is the same that you've put in the budget, right? You have the three thirty six in the ARPA fund.
So actually, I believe it shows three eighty because we didn't know what it's gonna be, but that was after.
Sorry, I'm this.
Do you have an updated page?
There's no page on this, but it's item, it's two eighty five.
Yeah.
I updated that.
You updated, okay, yep, yep.
So this is what we're talking about, the three thirty six. So we've already put it in.
Yes.
Our likely ARPA fund amount.
It's proposed.
Proposed. And we're getting, we anticipate we're going to get another one point, some million dollars in ARPA funds.
This is part of that. We get one more tranche.
Right.
Yeah.
This is tranche, same as last year, which is like one million five hundred.
A million seventy three thousand. Like that.
Little under two point two total.
Okay, so it's, we, we anticipate we're going to get about a million dollars. We anticipate or we. Acting that we're going to spend six hundred sixty, some thousand on these items. So we're still within a three hundred. Thousand dollar buffer for other items.
Let's see expenditures page. Twenty five shows the capital in there and then there's a contingency about. Yes, there will be. Some leftover funds there that haven't been. Twenty three, did I say your point?
Twenty five, I was like, I'm not finding it at twenty five. I was looking at twenty five, I was like.
So under operating expenditures.
Under the American Rescue Plan.
So the contingency number is what's basically what's left over. We have until December thirty first of two thousand twenty six to expend ARPA funds. And we have to do the two thousand twenty four to encumber or appropriate, what we wanna use it for. Hopefully by twenty six, you would.
Because in two years before that, but.
Yeah.
Anymore, I don't know.
There is some, some time to.
Right.
Spend it.
I missed this section.
Thoughts on prepayment or just paying it at the end?
I don't have a problem with, like I said, we're, we're positioned good financially to make that, you know, instead of gambling on. You get hit with a, you know, except ten percent or increase eight, ten percent, might as well lock in now.
So we can only prepay up to fifty percent, right?
Yeah, like I said, that's.
It'll still allow us to lock in though, right?
We'll lock in whether we prepay or we don't.
Yeah, so we can lock the pricing and pay a hundred percent when it shows up. The prepay was just an option. They said, if you wanna prepay, like if we. Paid fifty percent, it's nine thousand four hundred and ninety dollars.
Will we make more than that?
I'm interested, that's what I was gonna ask.
No, yeah, you can, yeah.
It's probably about a wash.
Yeah.
What we would get as a discount. My tendency is always to hang on to money.
Right.
And that's.
But I'd lock it in.
Yes. Okay. Very good. So we will work on that for the next agenda. That to you. The next thing I I propose is a. And then a little bit of that for a. So about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We figured out, well, not figured out, but actually I've got a memo from Chief Drinkup from two thousand and one. That he presented the commission that we need a fire inspector and it's, it. It's a definite need for the city. We'd have to update a couple of existing ordinances. But then we've also worked on a fee schedule if, you know. To actually charge for inspections, if that's something that you wanted to move forward to pay for the program. Much like a building inspector, like an inspector, that sort of thing, that it would be a. Fee to offset the cost of the the inspector position. So that's something that we proposed. I could talk to you for hours about why we need it, but unless you have any questions about it.
We, we have, we plugged in the exact same amount of revenue as the expenses of program. Be based and you'd have to back in to what that would mean in terms of actual user fee. Fairly complicated because not, not every kind of use requires inspection with the same frequency. So some uses require annual inspections, some biannual, some over three years. We don't have really a good inventory right now of what buildings fall into those various categories. Making a best guess for the first cycle, by the end of that first cycle, we know very well what the inventory of those different kinds of uses. Would be, I think it's very common out in the big wide world to have fire inspection programs. Been subject to them in my own office, you know. It's like seventy five dollar fee that I paid. Well, I, you know, I don't think it's, I think it's a, it's a, it's a required thing. Well, but we haven't done, probably as long as we've had the fire prevention code. Engaged in fire inspection, so we're supposed to engage them. As needed basis, which. As long as it's, it can be paid for by the fees, you know, like I said, we we put it in. Support it. And we'll get pushback on that a hundred percent. It's like, you know, to take the food trucks, for example, you know, that was a very minor, minor fee. And a minor example of a needed and very. Important fire inspection. Trucks essentially are a protein bomb waiting to go off if you don't have appropriate fire suppression system. We got into a lot of this pushback about that from those trucks that were limo account based. Not from the ones that operated out in the big wide world. There wasn't any kind of news to that. Those who were local. Shot to their system. This will be the same. Right. We've never done this. We wanna be business friendly. This isn't business friendly. Here all that kind of thing, you know, we implement this program. Chief can talk better than I can about the benefits of it, but one of the benefits is in fact a savings for all our residents in terms of. Fire rating. Your fire insurance rating determines what rates you pay on homeowners insurance and other sorts of property insurance. If you have a fire inspection program, that proves your rating, not the next year, but within a period of time when those ratings. How often are, how are we rated for that?
Every five years.
So you can see around the cycle then, improving your fire rating and therefore your property insurance rates. I'll have chief to speak to the others.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, there's, I know for a fact, Commissioner Castleberry, she actually asked us to come in and and do an inspection. And she was amazed at, you know, the, the. Things that weren't done. So if you pay a company to come in and do an inspection of a sprinkler system or a, or a. Fire suppression hood system, they give you a report. I actually got one today, one right here that. That says all the things that were wrong in a sprinkler system and. There's nobody right now that comes and says, you need to fix this. So next year, they're gonna come and tell you, hey, these things are still wrong. And if you don't tell them to fix it, we don't have anybody going around saying, hey, your building's unsafe, you need to fix this. So that's what the fire inspector, they're not certified to do the inspection, they just follow up. You know, they're not certified to fix it. They're certified to do the inspection and say, hey, you need to, you need to fix this stuff, right? This is going to either cause them to get hurt or cause a major fire. Which doesn't do anybody any good. So it does improve the, or it can improve your fire rating. Right now. The fire inspections and community risk reduction is actually a extra points. And the, the ISO rating, which is the insurance rating, but my guess is. It's going to be incorporated as, as not additional points, extra bonus points. Next time, it's probably gonna be required to get that. So if we can get out there and actually be doing these, we're gonna make it safer in the community. We could possibly reduce our insurance rates. It's just all around. There's, there's a lot of programs right now that the state actually wrote a federal grant to get free smoke alarms. For people's houses and we have some, we just don't have anybody to go out and install them. So that's another thing that. You know, that's not something we would charge homeowners for to go hang smoke alarms, but. This position is just, there's so many things that this position can do. Going out and doing education in the schools, we don't have anybody doing that currently because I'll go over that here's next. We don't have staffing to do it. We don't have anybody to do it. That'd be another thing that that this person could do is, you know, that's the community risk reduction side of it. Is getting out there into the community and educating them and and doing that sort of thing. So that's really what we're trying to do. That's really what we're trying to do. We used to do it in two thousand nineteen, or I'm sorry, nineteen ninety nine, they quit doing it. Because they were too busy to do it. What they were doing is they were setting it up with a business owner, hey, we'll come to a fire inspection and they get pulled away for calls constantly. So it wasn't, it just wasn't fair to the business owner to keep rescheduling that sort of thing. So like, hey, we we can't do it. Chief Trinka said, hey, we need, we need a fire inspector and it just never gained traction. So that's what I'm I'm hoping for pushing toward. To just help the community in general.
Do you feel there's enough work? Obviously for, like I said, because it'd be. Kind of like what Glenn's position was is general fund neutral when it comes to, this is fee based too. Obviously you bought JCon, so that's different, but. Um, so you 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 feel there's enough work if the fees were adjusted to be able to pay for those positions then, or when it comes to benefits and.
I would say there's definitely enough work. How, you know, how we adjust it for the fee base. You know, like you said, it's it's kind of going to be a trial and error of, I don't know if that's the correct terminology, but. Depending on how we set it up, like every building is different, right? So so learning. Everybody Ann Arbor uses by square footage. They do it by square footage. If you're building, you know, it's X square footage, they charge, I think it's five or six cents per square foot. Some places just charge a flat fee seventy five dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars. You know, everybody has a different fee and until we are actually out there doing it. We aren't really going to know what that magic number is, but we have to start somewhere. So that's what we're looking towards.
Who does it now? Who does the inspections now?
So currently, the only ones we do is is. If there is, if somebody calls and complains. Then there's three of myself, Captain Springer and firefighter Comfort. The three of us are certified. So one of the three of us try to catch an inspection. Any new construction, we can, for their CFO, we go out and one of us. Lately, it's been myself trying to do it when I can between everything else, because the other two were just too busy. They just, they don't have time. They, it's not that they don't want to do it and they're certified, but. That's that's where we're at currently. It's just trying to fit it in while we can. So.
First of all, do you do you pre-schedule the inspections? I mean, does the business know you're coming? Or is it a big surprise?
Nope. So, um, so what my plan is. Is to actually send out, so we have to send out a letter every five years to every business to try and figure out. If we have a, if they have any hazardous materials that's required by state law, if they don't respond. Then we have to go out and actually do the inspection. We sent out, there was close to seven hundred and we got about a hundred and thirty back last time we sent them out. So we have to go out and do the actual inspections. So that will be part of it. My first thing is. I want to send a mailer out to everybody and say, this is what we're, this is what we're going to be looking for. We want to show up and there's no violations. That'd be wonderful, right? But we're going to be looking at sprinkler systems. We're going to be looking at fire alarm. We're going to be looking at egress. We're going to look at exit and egress lighting. That sort of thing, right? We want people to be able to get out if there's a fire and we want suppression system or the alarm system to be working. So that's going to be our. We want to let people know ahead of time. Then when it's time to start doing inspections, then we call them out of time and say. You know, when's a good time for you? We'll set it up and and come out and do an inspection. So. That's where we're at.
All right. Well, I I would support this. I just want to mention. What I thought to be kind of an embarrassing situation. I'm going to chalk it up to being an isolated one. I happen to be in one, one of our businesses. The day when the department came out to do an inspection. Captain Springer and another firefighter arrived in a fire engine to do the inspection. That just seemed inefficient. I hope it's an isolated incident. A full, a full-time fire inspector would be going out there in something other than a fire.
Right.
And in doing those inspections.
Yeah, currently because they'll get pulled away for other calls.
That's why they're in the.
That's why they're in an, yeah. My plan currently, we have a brush truck was, which is a pickup truck to use that for fire inspections. But currently they take engines because they have to be available around other calls.
Hello, sir. Hey, can you, you need.
So we don't do any like single family. And then the rental housing does the rentals. But right now nobody's doing the businesses. Commercial. Businesses and we may, once we get it set up, we may. Along with Jake, go to like the big apartment buildings because we have more expertise and sprinkler systems, alarm systems. Right? So so we really want to work together because like Jake has expertise in things that we don't. And we have expertise in things he does. So those big apartment buildings, we'd work together. For the most part, I need to separate.
I have a question when you can break in, yeah. As far as the fire inspector goes. I under, from what you're saying, Eric, you've got plenty of work for him, but would he be a body on a truck in case of an emergency?
This position would be a forty hour week, so eight to four thirty or whatever hours. But if it were a major fire, then he could respond. He'll still be a certified firefighter.
Okay, that was sort of my question.
Yeah, we wouldn't do that on a daily basis because we run back into the same thing, but this afternoon we had a house. He would respond to the house. Because that's something we need more, more help.
Okay, thanks a lot.
All right. So the next thing is, or the last thing, I guess, last major thing. I did request three additional firefighters. In the budget, or not in the budget, okay. So I did, the problem is it takes three firefighters to make one. Because there's three separate shifts, twenty four hour shifts. That's the, so if we hired one, it doesn't really. It doesn't really, not say it doesn't do any good, but we need three to cover the shifts. So. I feel that it's my, I guess, responsibility as the chief to let you know where we're at as a fire department staffing. So just to show you. Where we're at, I've got the breakdown on the page of in two thousand. We were in nineteen hundred and twelve calls, averaged about five point two per per day. That left us. Time to do the required training we have. It left us time to do maintenance on the trucks and the station, a lot of fire education in the schools. Excuse me, that sort of thing. So just looking at last year, we were up over five thousand calls. So almost three times as many calls. In in twenty one years. So. Something like I said, that I think. I need to bring to you that we're, we had, right now we can per se handle two calls at a time. Hoping that we don't get a third, but if you look at the the concurrent calls, so this is just March. January first through March ninth of this year. That's where we had seven hundred and thirty seven times. We had one call. We cleared the call. We were back in service before we got another one. Two hundred and fifty eight times, we had two calls at a time. And as long as those are just medicals, we can usually handle that. Now, if one of those calls were a fire and everybody was tied up, that's where we have issues covering that. Sixty two times, so almost once a day, we had three calls all at the same time. That's the ones we really have trouble covering. We only have two ambulances on the road daily. And we really have issues once we get to third, fourth, fifth and once six calls at a time. We do use mutual aid, which is great, but they are. As I say, as busy as we are, but they're busy also. And all structure fires were dispatched with us, Madison Township and Adrian Township. Today for the house fire this afternoon, Adrian Township wasn't available. They were on two calls of their. So. We're, we're at a point where. There's calls that that we don't have enough manpower to cover. And that's where we're really running into some issues. So like I said, I think.
I think what we we opted into this ambulance program in twenty seventeen, I believe, right?
Twenty nineteen, January first of twenty nineteen.
That's when we first started doing it.
Is when we officially took over.
Okay, see, because before that, LCA was here, so we can't necessarily take the calls for service. With that, so essentially you look at twelve point eight calls on average to fourteen point three. It's two calls a day. I mean, so where, so where are we at with the ambulance service when it comes to, because we, when we opted in. The goal might, you know, my position was that we need to get you guys up to proper staffed levels, you know, so that was the reason why the safety grant went away. And so you guys are getting just beat down with the address, multiple calls and and for morale issues with that. So we hired six, so. How much professional, how much will those six employees, how much did it cost to be, do we have to do ambulance wise when it comes to revenue? In order to pay for those six employees, was it like six hundred, right, or so?
So just for the six people, it was less than six hundred, it was like five. Five, five fifty?
I mean, the ambulance, like, we were trying to, okay, so then. So right now, wh- what are we averaging right now? Like when it comes to, I think I've seen it somewhere like nine hundred.
Nine hundred thousand is what we budgeted. So we, it, every year is different. Anywhere between eight fifty and a and a million dollars, we figure. You know, we've never made a million dollars, but. You know, it was, we're on track to be above nine hundred thousand. Is where we're at. So, yeah, so when we took over the ambulance. We were at maximum of five a shift, minimum of three. That put us up to. Five and seven now is where we are currently. And then if you, on the back, it gives you an idea. So when I say that, you know, on here we've got. Average of fourteen calls a day. No day is the same. You'll see on here, one day, and this is just January first of February. Oh, no, I'm sorry. This is all of last year, this graph. So all of last year. So there's a day we ran thirty calls. There's absolutely no way we can cover that, right? But that's not, we can't staff for thirty calls a day, right? We need to staff for what normal, but normal is more. Getting worse. And I say getting worse, people need help more than than what they use. So. I'm going to say with our current staffing, we can ha, average, or we can handle ten. Eleven calls a day, but. We really. What that eighth person would do per shift would allow us to put a third ambulance on. And that would, there's, like I said, that that would help us with that extra sixty two. Sixty two times just this year where somebody needed an ambulance and we weren't available or. We're tied up on a fire and and, you know, we need that extra ambulance. So that's, that's where we're looking for that.
I I just wanted to point out to my colleagues here, I just wanted to let them know that, you know, that. I want to remember when we opted into that compared to where we are now for call, but. I'm again, I, you know, we, I didn't think of this as a business model per se, like when it comes to cash flow, like how much are we making? You know, our general fund, but but also I don't, I don't want to get fat and happy, but how's morale in the department? How are, how are the guys? I mean, how are they?
They're wore out. They are wore out. They're not unhappy being here. But they're worn out. I can tell you that they're running even fifteen, twenty calls a day, which we do regularly. Is a lot. Well, actually, I think we did twenty.
Twenty four the day. You could have done more if you let me drive.
I mean, it's, it's a lot and and the problem is not just running the calls because, you know. Running the calls is good and and that's why we're there, but we're not getting done some of the things that we should be doing. The truck maintenance and the and the station maintenance and the, the things that we used to be able to do when we were running those calls. That's the stuff that's getting out. We're, we're still running calls, but they're literally, they're running from call to call to call and it, and it. Emergency services is weird or, you know, it's not something that you can plan out. That, you know, hey, today I'm going to run twenty calls. No, and I'm going to do one every hour. No, it, we get it, you know, three, four at a time consistently. We've had twice in one day, just this year, we had two cardiac arrests and we only had one person to send to the cardiac arrest. That's normally, if we have good staffing, that's four people show, you know, we send four people to a cardiac arrest. I mean, somebody's heart stopped and they're not breathing. So that's, that's where we look at it. We say. It's, you know, it's, it's partially. I've had a lot of people ask me, is it COVID? You know, is this going to go down? I don't know, but I can tell you that. I can't tell you it's not, but I can tell you that trends aren't looking that way. Because what we found after COVID, post-COVID is. And and actually thirteen news just did a story on this, I think last night, there's no home care workers. To help elderly that need help. So therefore. Since COVID. We're doing a lot more because people don't have people helping them at home. So they get sick, they get ill. They need extra assistance, right? They have to go to the hospital because there was nobody there to take care of them to prevent that. From happening. So I don't see that correcting itself anytime soon. So that's, that's where we're at. It's. I can tell you, you know, at first it was the, we were all from COVID, now it's just. We're out from every day just coming in and run a call after call after call and not being able to get caught up on. Excuse me, reports. That we have to do that are mandated because they're just running call after call.
Craig, did you say that's not in with these?
What would be the budget?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Two thirty to two forty, and that's assuming full benefits, family plan.
Yeah, that's the thing. See, obviously this year we have. Extra money in terms of ARPA funds, but our protocol has been not to use those for recurring.
What's your position on staffing? Because I think, you know, we're not here every day. We're not in city hall and 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 so obviously you cut it. You cut it off for a reason. So what, what's your position on it? I mean, you don't.
Well, we, we cut it out for that. There wasn't a revenue source to support it. I told you where we were to start with. One thing that changed. Obviously, after we brought the budget into balance was we kept the news of. Excise tax money. So originally we were plugging in three hundred change and. Use fund balance. It's the same thing we did last year to get it to balance. I mean, it says something about the conservative nature of our assumptions that outstanding the fact that we tend to do that. Turns out, you know, we do have enough money that we don't need. That was where we originally put, do you remember the exact number?
Three fifty, three sixteen.
Then we were going to plug in for fund balance. When we got the news about the excise tax. Revenue that we can expect this year. We plugged in five hundred thousand more excise tax revenue for next year. So based on the assumptions on a share of my weekly report. And so, you know, in theory, we should be up a little bit. Above what. We needed to balance. So we're, you know, now if that assumption. Holds true. So we're, you know, now, if that assumption holds true. You know, could you add something like this in and presume that you would have the money to support it going forward? Possibly, as long as the assumptions about excise tax revenue prove to be true. Uh, we thought, Nathan and I thought five hundred thousand for next year was a conservative number. Again, we don't understand, is the state really telling us what the state said is that this is the amount they're distributing after. Funding all, what was the term I used all year, all?
Their overhead.
Their, yeah, their overhead. All, all earmarks, and so we interpreted earmarks as meaning. The, the research fund that they're required, and so they didn't fund the research, there's, they were supposed to put twenty million dollars a year. Uh, away for a research fund for basically the first three years, twenty, twenty, twenty-one and twenty, twenty-two of the state's fiscal year. Fiscal year twenty twenty-one. They put none away the first year, and they just distributed it all, and that's why we assumed we would get none this year, because. Last year, their fiscal year twenty twenty, they distributed twenty million dollars and put nothing aside for the fund, so. Next year, it's all going to fund. If what they, i- i- if what they're saying is that they have funded what would now be forty million dollars. And their obligations as it relates to that research fund, and they're distributing another forty-two million dollars, is what they're distributing. I think they brought in eighty-two million dollars of excise tax revenue. Yeah, that, once you get to the end of those three years. It's all gonna be a million dollars a year for us.
Yeah.
I don't know, that kind of revenue source would there be money to fund additional positions, yes, there, there would be in that case. That was not something we knew when we were balancing the budget.
Is this something that we would know before we voted on the budget?
Well.
Always meant, I mean.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. You know, I don't think you have to know it ahead of time necessarily, you could add it later.
I didn't know if that.
Problem of, there's, there's creating a position, other than showing. Which is a whole other story, right? Maybe you wanna speak for a minute about that, Chief?
So right now, um, I, I actually can say that, um, and I would, because I am too prestigious. That since the, that's not what. We have had, uh, since the pay rates were adjusted, we have not had anybody leave, um, which is excellent. Uh, but going back to the point of the guys are tired, and they know that there are other places they could go and run less calls and get paid the same. Um. It, it, they know it's out there, right? Um, so that's, I, I think they're, they're tired. Uh, we are fully staffed right now. We do have, uh, four that are in paramedic class. So I can find firefighter EMTs. Uh, I'm, I'm pretty confident if we had three more physicians. That I could find firefighter EMTs, we would have to train them, uh, to the paramedic level, is my guess. Uh, we do have one currently. Uh, who we hired as a paramedic, who we sent, or actually, he's got about a month left in the fire academy. Which is a whole lot quicker. It takes about two years to get through a permanent program, start to finish. Uh, it takes about four months to get through a fire academy. So, uh, we do have one in the fire academy right now that we hired as a paramedic, and we have three firefighters who are on the streets most days. Going through the paramedic program, um, that are all, four of them actually almost finished up, so, um. Would we have to train them? You know, I don't know that. That we'll see the days again that we can hire fully trained people, but I'm pretty confident we can find. Three at least firefighter EMTs, or, you know, maybe somebody that's got a permit to send a fighter school. That would fill those positions and could fill those positions and get us up to where we need. Um, it's not preferable, but it is okay to have an EMT and a paramedic on the ambulance. Um, that's legal in the state of Michigan. Uh, we'd like to have two paramedics in each ambulance, so that's why we train them to that level. Um, so that's, that's our end goal, but that's where we're at currently. Um, I, I think we're a good place. I think we could find people to fill that position, we did have to train them.
You know, I just, I mean, the call state for, I mean, it speaks for itself when it comes to volume you guys do, and then there's not, out of my mind that. We are getting exceptional service than what we did in the past with, with, you know, with the other entity doing it, but. I just didn't want, you know, I know how this works when it comes to staff, you know? It's like, you know, we told Martin Steiger this in the beginning, he's like, listen, so any excess revenue you get. It's not yours, it's going in the general fund, but when it comes to morale and, and just, and just, uh, guys getting just buried in work, you know, that, that concerns me too, but. I, I just wanted to be from my position individually, I just don't want, the thing, all right, well, you know, because I know guys talk and, you know, we brought nine hundred thousand dollars last year. You know, on our backs, you know, and, and stuff, so I just want to be clear for me is that, you know, that. I want high morale on, on those departments, because those are our public safety, you know, but, um. It's just, you know, it's just hiring staff, I always, you know, divert, obviously to the department and then drag, you know, this, because. It is recurring costs, it is recurring pension costs, it is recurring healthcare costs, so, um, but obviously the calls dictate how many bodies you have. Um, you know, in that department, so.
Now, um, like currently, two-thirds of our department are not in a pension, and new hires wouldn't be, because they're in the DC program.
Right.
So, I mean.
Retired, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, there is retired, absolutely. Yep, yep, so, um, and maybe I'm, I think of the pension as the DB program, and maybe I'm thinking wrong, but. Um, yeah, I, I can tell you that, um, I wouldn't be talking to you about this if I didn't think the fire inspector were needed. And the extra positions are needed. I'm not wanting to, um, bring something before you that I don't think we need. Not just a want, it's something that I think we need, um, but I also understand. The fiscal side of it too, if there's no money, there's no money, so, but I feel it's my job to bring it to you and tell you we need it.
True.
And it's your job to figure out if it's there or not, so.
Well, I, I mean, my opinion, I think, is, is much the same as Commissioner Hells. Um, I think, again, we're in public safety business. I'm concerned about the morale, I'm concerned about the guys being worn out and going somewhere else and creating a bigger problem for you. Um, I think quite frankly, it's an excellent use of the excise tax money, um, to put that toward public safety. Um, so I would, I would support it. It's one of those things where we have to start, this is why we have money now to, we had to need to figure out slowly get back to where we should be when it comes to staffing levels, not. They always said, you know, citizens don't want us to be a bank, they want us to provide services, you know, and, and so, um. Our public safety departments are, 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 are morals downs because of the low workload, and that's, that's concerning to me, so.
Well, and we're already being asked questions, so what are we gonna do with the marijuana money?
Yep.
And I think this is a great answer.
Those guys do a hell of a job. I know certain people that have had the ambulance, I mean, it's. It's, you guys provide excellent service. I mean, they're all guys and gals and, you know, servicing our people, it's just a different, different kind of service, so. So we'll be used to it.
I have two question comments. So we're, we're looking good with marijuana funds this year. If I read correctly, the, but the. Taint recently, so they were selling at an incredibly cheap rate, which will affect the tax dollars that come in. So to, to guarantee or to, to base people's salaries on marijuana tax funds. Is a little disconcerting to me because we just really don't know. We, we have what, eight up and functioning now, who's to say they're all going to be. Business in two years and five years.
Really, we really have more than, we got eight current agents, we have one on the. Overlay plus, I mean, we have ten licenses and commercials, those are. I think nine of which are open plus one. But yes, apparently whatever the measuring point was, they're fiscal. So it'll at least grow to probably eleven. You know, in the next year. Sales.
And whether or not they can stay in business, they'll stay in business. Now, there may be someone who comes in to take their spot, but that's still one of the things we talked about. Who, well, it was talked about before I got on, but just that. Do we really know if all these places are gonna make it? It's the survival of the fittest, and it may or may not all make it. That was, that was my first comment. My, my second comment is, um. I would, I think at this point. I'll have to think about this a little bit more, personally rather see us hire the, the full shift of permanent firefighters versus hiring the fire inspector. And take, you know, that's a hundred and fifty thousand we have in the budget.
Well, but, but that only, we only get that a hundred and fifty thousand if we have.
If we have the fees, true.
But that one's a wash.
Be based, be based on this.
You, you know, one thing I was thinking of too is just that, you know, we did. Just recently, you know, commit to, you know, a revitalization coordinator to, you know, another. Inspector and, you know, public safety is very important. I just, I wish there was a way that we could figure out. A way to budget in to have, you know, to have this extra position, these three shifts, just because. You know, public safety is extremely important, you know, our, our fire department's extremely important, and, um. I mean, honestly, it's more important than library now, I mean, that's, that. Not saying what's not important, but I, I, that's my. Police and fire departments, that those are, you know, those are our number one. That's our emergency services, that, that should be our highest priority. I just don't know, you know, if there's a way to figure it out, but that's just where I'm kind of feeling right now.
I have a question for you, and Commissioner Roberts kind of raised the issue about the. The dropping in the wholesale price of, of marijuana and the excess inventory, if you will. Do the wholesalers or the cultivators, are they paying any taxes, or is that simply at the retail level? Okay, so, um. My understanding is there hasn't been any drop off in that business, it's just the advantage that. Um, I think even the, the retail businesses. You know, they're, they're selling more, and making, well, I don't know if they're selling more, they're not selling any less, but they're making a greater profit. Um, because they're buying, they're buying their wholesale product at a much lower cost, so. Um, I'm not as concerned about the drop off in the taxes if it's only being collected at the retail level. If it was wholesale, it would be a whole other story. So, yeah, the projections that I've seen, exactly as you pointed out, the numbers should, should continue to go up in terms of the ta- tax collected. I'd like to have that piece that one way county gets to do it.
That's a whole other story. Well, as long as we can talk about it, we can always be at it later when, once we get Italian land back, we can always amend it down the road and.
Yeah.
And, and, and.
That's why I was saying that, I think that's something to look at, and then, you know, when we have a better idea, and at least something to, to at least still look at and really explore.
You can tell the guys the commission is open to that. Sure ourselves.
Mm-hmm, we'd like to do this, obviously, and see the numbers. I just wanna do it for two, three years and then.
Right. Especially that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're right. Give us some light.
Yeah.
Exactly, that's what I'm.
Mm-hmm.
But they're doing a hell of a job.
I assure.
In both, both departments are public safety, they're doing a great job, and. I've seen exceptional, sir, I witnessed it, one, the little girl eating a bowels, that was, that's, I was right there when she got hit, and you guys were there in three minutes, you know?
But, but I do agree too with you, Commissioner Hells, it's just that. You know, we are asked all the time, what are you gonna do with this marijuana money, you're gonna have this marijuana money, I mean, that is. That is a great area to put that money, if, you know, if it looks like we really are gonna get that and, and. Somewhat assured, you know, but, um, you know, at least know that that salary can be supported throughout the years, but, um. I think that's a really great way to take that money. But it's a great use for our full community.
Um, just so, is that the fire inspector, we wanna leave it in there and bring a fee schedule for you to discuss?
I think so.
Okay.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have other bunch of discussions before we finalize, I assume.
They are. I'm gonna ask you to set the public hearing.
Okay, well, that's fine.
And, uh, we'll have, uh, the hearing on the eighteen, and it must stop.
Before my one.
Eighth or the first name.
Alright. Um, other than that, I mean, that's pretty much the major things, nothing that I can think of really changed, um, drastically.
You guys think of anything?
If I had. Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, I've been drinking too much. Sorry.
I think you should go first.
There you go, save one for me.
Very good. I'll save one.
Alright.
Alright.
Is Eric?
Yep, thank you. Hot mic or no real? Am I costume?
I think.
He didn't go to.
Yeah, we do that.
Yeah, I thought. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
He didn't go to. Yeah, I thought.
Yeah. Where it took all, took all our.
Making those.
Made up in time.
Plan destined meeting and we're not, we're not being transparent. This is ten presses posted on the website, what do you want? I said, you, I thought, I said, Ken, you wouldn't be happy if we sent an invitation to every household in the city to tell them we're having a meeting.
Yeah.
We, we turned on.
Right.
All right, good evening, um, I bring good news for all of you. Right? Well, I'm putting it out there, the atmosphere and, you know, the universe will follow suit. Um, yep, so I got a, a, a one-page summary here for you. You know, obviously avoiding going line per line in regards to.
Learning the right way. Starting out your first year with the sovereign, that's awesome.
Like I said, other than going line per line, um, are my operating budgets, um, I would say almost virtually identical to last year, um, there are just a few minor increases, you know, it's just things in regards to some social security, medical, Medicaid or medical wages, um, things like that. But what I wanted to highlight is some of the projects, uh, and also some of the, uh, purchases that we're looking at and, you know, feel free to ask questions as we go here. But starting for the twenty-two, twenty-three in regards to the cemetery, we're looking at adding a new columbarium, um, the one we have now is just about at capacity and, uh, Denny, our section out of the cemetery has a waiting list and this essentially pays for itself. So, um, that's on the horizon. We're also looking at, uh, repaving all of Oakwood Cemetery, and if you've been out there at all recently, it's, uh, it's, it's a rough shape, so, yes.
Can I ask a question of the go along with cemeteries, talking about it?
Yes.
I, cause I, it's hard to tell by looking at the budget here, it, is any of this allocated to repainting that fence or anything along that line as well? I just know there's been several in the community concerned because it's a big anniversary coming up for cemetery and you just the, the looks of it because it's, because there's like somebody hit on Oakwood, took out a part of the fence from a car accident and just the, the look of that fence, I didn't know what that was in there.
So that, that's actually, that's actually, we've started to take care, we're actually gonna be, uh, painting that, hopefully here in the next month or so, once the weather, uh, opens up, we're gonna do that, and then Denny is also working with a couple of contractors to essentially replicate that missing space because that fence being as old as it is, there isn't just remaining pieces laying around just to, to fill it in, so he's working with, uh, a few contractors, some builders, um, essentially just recreating and fabricating, so that'll be taken care of, um, this year, so.
What's the cast, the capacity of the new columbarium?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, that's something I can look into though.
I believe it's a hundred net.
Hundred?
Yeah, I think so, I think that's what we had last year, that's what we're.
How long's the waiting list?
Uh, Denny's, he fields calls weekly, so, um, he said there's, there's ample, um, people waiting to, to get into it, so.
We've cut the columbarium last year.
What's that?
Did we cut this last year?
No, this is new this year.
This is another.
Right. We, we.
Bought it last year.
We put a new one in, actually it was two years ago now, um, that was just installed, last year it was finally installed. Um, and it's, it's full already, so there's a, there's a need for it.
Wow.
But again, it does pay for itself.
Well, that's why I was asking, we should make it bigger than a hundred capacity, the waiting list is there, it's not paper.
And I can't find it now. But this is something I wasn't aware. There it was, I swear, I saw it.
We do accept pets, yes.
We do.
Yes. It's not often that it's used, but we do have pets. And there's a few in place for that, yeah.
So continuing on there, um, we're going to be again, uh, repaving all of Oakwood, and the good thing about this is once this is done this spring, going forward, we can put, uh, we can have a, it may, it's planned in place in regards to ceiling and feeling cracks and stuff like that, so that'll be at a, at a minimal cost, that's something that we can start to plan for and budget for, um, over the next handful of years, um, but this major overhaul, where you see that figure of fifty thousand, that's gonna essentially redo the entire cemetery, then again, going forward, you know, crack ceiling and coating, um, as needed. Parks, moving into parks and forestry and recreation, um, some of the projects that we're gonna be working on, um, I have listed here, uh, we're gonna be doing some roof repairs at some various parks, um, shelters, um, as well as some of the barns out at Heritage, some of the working areas and where you put the zavlers, um, holes and stuff, so we're gonna do some patching, which we've already done, it's been done previously, um, so we're gonna be working on those. Um, and you see the allotted amount, um, and where that's coming from. One of the things, the next one, lighting upgrades out of Parish and Island, as well as other parks, uh, it's been something that's been brought to my attention when I started, um, not only from, uh, some of the commissioners here, but also just the public in general. One of the very first projects that we just completed recently was simple, but we added, uh, a shelter light, a floodlight to the shelter out at Parish Park, and I drove by there a few times in the evening, it's extremely well lit. So that was a safety concern brought forward by, uh, some, some residents, so we are going to, uh, move forward with essentially doing the same thing down at Island Park and really stretching these funds as far as we can, but again, uh, we have the, the project that was done at Parish and for the price that it was done at was really good, and we're gonna be able to really address the lighting issues out at our parks, essentially again, for safety and security. Continuing on, some miscellaneous playground refurbishing, um, we actually have a safety inspector coming out, uh, April twelfth, and she is going to go to all of our parks and do a, an assessment of where we're at, um, in regards to our playgrounds, again, just safety concerns and things that need to be touched up, again, keeping the kids safe. Um, so you see that amount there. Uh, continuing on, uh, decorations, lights, uh, furnishings, this is going to be for Heritage downtown. Again, another super successful year out of Heritage Park, um, with a lot of Christmas lights out there, um, as well, we're gonna continue to address, sprucing up downtown around the holidays, um, so that's where these funds will be allocated for, where we're going towards. So those are just a list of some of the, some of the initial projects that we're gonna be doing, um, moving forward, we are essentially at a point now where there is some, um, equipment needs here, you see that four-by-four truck with the plow, the last time that equivalent truck was purchased, um, was in two thousand and five, so we're at a point now, just again, to, um, address, uh, snowplow needs, um, as well as other needs with the truck, um, that's what we're moving forward with. As you know, we have six hundred acres of grass that needs mowed and we're attacking that especially out of Heritage, so you see the large mower, um, that's gonna come from the fee estate, that's, uh, something that's definitely needed. Um, and that comes from Doug Lally, who, uh, essentially runs Heritage for us, um, this is just so we can allow him to uh, cover more area a little bit quicker. Moving on to care TA payment, that's, uh, again, coming out of fee, that fifty grand goes towards the trail, uh, maintenance and things of that nature. The next two items, these two Bobcats, yes, yes.
So, so for revenues, we jumped quite high on the trail, what, from another budget of forty-four thousand five hundred for this year, up to a hundred thousand. Where is that extra fund coming?
That's, that's the other number. Authority?
Yeah, okay, that's the.
Well, the total, the total authority revenue is a hundred thousand, which fifty is ours.
So they are actually paying us?
Yeah, they did this year too.
Okay.
Twelve-five from two townships in the city of Tecumseh, um, twelve-five also.
I didn't see that reflected in current budget, that's why I wasn't sure.
Moving on to these, these next two, uh, machines, um, the Bobcat L twenty-eights and the Bobcat Toolcat, uh, the Toolcat is a, uh, machine essentially gonna be reside out of Heritage, that's going to allow for a ton of dirt, stone, mulch, all that type of movement, carrying trees and equipment, um, as well as timber and all those types of things, it's, uh, much needed, but it also has attachments that allow us to bring it into town and help us, uh, when it comes to snow removal and things of that nature, same thing with the, uh, the L twenty-eight, that'll be something that's here in town, again, sidewalks, um, parking lots, small workspaces that allow us again, help move trees and equipment and things of that nature. Moving on, we have miscellaneous equipments, uh, the fee estate, um, that's gonna simply allow for things like trimmers, blowers, um, utility trainers, utility trailers, things of that nature that'll be used, um, in essentially beautifying the parks, um, will just make things a lot simpler and again, trimmers and blowers, things of that nature, those things constantly break, um, and need replacement just because of the amount of usage that they get, so that ten grand is allocated from fee, um, additionally, there's another, uh, ten grand miscellaneous equipment out of rescue funds, and that's for recreational, so obviously we can't use fee for recreational items, so this'll be in regards to things that we need for ball fields, um, paint, paint guns, uh, rollers, things of that nature, get all focused on uh, recreational stuff that we don't use, uh, fee equipment for, or fee funds for. You too, now, public arts, again, that's, uh, putting up statues, things of that nature downtown, working at beautifying, uh, downtown Adrian. In addition there, you see that we have ten thousand, uh, for city tree planting, that's something that's gonna be ongoing, adding new and healthy trees to downtown areas as well as our parks, um, so, and that's on the state.
Jeremiah, is that something that could go down, like, I know we haven't talked about it yet as a group, but I meant about passable trees, you know, being dedicated in memory of or something like that, and, and they, they're, they're paying that fee for the trees, is this something that would go down, or would we just do those in addition to what's already been being allocated for city trees, so we just have a lot more trees?
We could look at that, we could look at that, well, I'll see, um, Matt, in regards like the fee estate, so I know, um, a lot of the, some of the tree planting are things that have been designated, um, with the downtown authority, um, there's designated projects already kind of in place to add um, in regards to what we're talking about, that's something that, um, I'm definitely looking into, and do I have an answer right away, I don't know.
And you think these are hopefully street trees?
That's what I was asking.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I open up some questions now?
Are we using all of the state funds that we are able to use?
Yes, so, um, and you and I had spoken passing once before and, and, you know, we've talked about, um, in the years past, there was reasons why, for example, maybe all the fee estate money were used, was not used. They kind of researching and talking to other department heads and, and, and people with finance, so for example, say you have a hundred thousand dollars and it's designated for a hundred thousand dollar project. At different times, sometimes those projects may come in under budget, last minute, so it may come in at ninety-five thousand, essentially five thousand left over. And so those are scenarios like that, or even going over budget, um, but those are scenarios essentially the market in regards to, um, supplies, labor, all that kind of stuff, it varies and it's very fluid, so there's never really a time where people have gone forward and said, let's just leave this money sitting here, um, it's designated, but there are scenarios where projects come under budget or things can't be done that year, so those funds aren't used, it's never, um, our goal is to use every, every dollar that we can each year.
We, we don't lose those distributed funds, they go into sort of their own fund balance with the estate, those distributed. So what you're talking about, using that, that's whatever that, that prescribed amount thrown off per year that we're allowed to use, but if we don't use it, it's still there for us to use in the future.
Um, one thing, it's not really necessarily about these exact dollars, but you know, one of the line items here, the miscellaneous playground refurbishing, uh, I'd just like to, you know, I haven't even had this discussion with you, but put it out there that, you know, there's been a lot of community response, um, that have, you know, come to me that started right after I was elected, but just on, you know, can we start seeing some inclusive equipment at some of these playgrounds, so one thing that happened pre-COVID is Matt and I were out there meeting with some playground people at Island because there was literally no swings on a couple of structures that were already there, it's just, just things had gotten bad or whatever, and so it was great, it was the opportunity and in went a, um, an all-inclusive swing, I mean, so that, so we put, so one went in there because the structure already existed and needed to be refurbished, and so, you know, that, that has that, but you know, there's other areas, there's other playgrounds, um, I know there's, you know, I've had a few people approach me about Parish Park, you know, just to get one thing, you know, if maybe we can just start putting a few things here, there, a sensory board or whatever it may be, um, you know, they make a lot of those types of equipment, but maybe as we're looking at refurbishing, maybe it's not, maybe it is replacing what's there to make it safer, but maybe it's replacing it with something that's more all-inclusive, just a thought.
The other questions or thoughts? I will say there's, there's a lot of exciting things coming down the pipe, um, I'm, I'm excited, uh, to obviously be here with the city and the Parks Department, um, seeing the projects and where we're going with things, um, addressing Trussell Park this year, um, Heritage Park, um, there's a lot of good things going, and so, uh, I'm really excited, I think you're gonna see here very soon, um, the improvements and hopefully these standards that are, that are citizens' wants, and I believe they are, are going to be, actually today, I had a meeting this morning, this afternoon with a gentleman. And I believe they are going to be, actually today I had a meeting this morning, this afternoon with a gentleman in regards to disc golf, they want to start a disc golf series. And they travel around the state of Michigan, the Midwest, and they really enjoy Heritage Park. So they approached me today saying, hey, we want to start a disc golf series, we want to join up, we have sponsors. So there's a lot of exciting things coming down the pipe this summer, we're gonna have over six hundred riders for a two-day mountain biking event, all kids. And they came out last year and I spoke with one of the representatives and said it was the best supported, staff-supported race years that they've been to, so I, I credit, you know, everyone that's Jason and Matt and those guys that were essentially operating the department before I got here, so they're coming back, there are six hundred kids with that, obviously families. They're gonna be here for two days in August, so a lot of exciting stuff.
And here's?
Yeah.
Our, our, to be clear, our pickleball courts are in this year's budget. We have not cut the amount of money available to.
Correct, we are, we are absolutely doing our due diligence in regards to the pickleball. We live in Michigan, so surfaces, we just didn't want to throw some surface down there next year due to rain, snow, hot, cold, eroding of the surface, so we've been diligent and reaching out to a number of different vendors and getting ideas essentially to put down the best service. A lifelong childhood friend of mine is the superintendent of La Bonita Parks. So her and I have been discussing some of the issues and downfalls that they've had with the services they put down up there. So she's given me a lot of valuable information, it's kind of steered me away from a few areas. So we are doing our due diligence and figuring out the best service to go down, and it will go down this year, so we'll be done.
Thank you for your email with those explanations, that was very helpful. The only thing I would say about the parks and whatever improvements we make, I hear a lot of comments about how shabby some of our parks look. So as you take care of that, let's not keep it a secret, let's, like, you know, let's publicize the fact that things are happening in the parks. So that people know it.
I do appreciate you in your email doing Greg about the lighting at Parish Park, you know, because obviously, you know, DeAngelo and some of that group that, that, that's very involved. They were concerned about safety issues and, and, you know, he emailed back and got taken care of, so, but you know, those things where, you know, you know, they wanted signage too with the hours on there, but obviously our parks close at dusk, so. But the lighting component of just for that neighborhood, I think, was, was, was very appreciated by those folks, so.
And from a safety standpoint, I think one of the things that you're gonna see just from that lighting is deterring behavior that we may not want in our parks, again, you know, a drive-by, drop off a, a friend of my son's from basketball practice, and he lives over in Parish. So, you know, he drove by extremely well lit, full light on the outside, so again, it's, it's, it's an inviting area, but it's also deterrent. Essentially, if I'm up to no good, I don't want to go in this well lit area and do whatever I may do that's up to them. So I think this is gonna really do a lot of positive things again in regards to safety and security for residents.
You touched on, on pickleball courts, what's the status or schedule for the splash pad?
Our installer's gonna be here April seventh, they're gonna start doing the, laying the groundwork. And our target goal for it to be completed will be roughly April twentieth. And you're full, full, we've already actually, some of the parts are already sitting in the, in the parks garage. But April seventh, lay ground and hopefully two week installation.
And you know that former mayor Greg Duvaris was really hoping there'll be a ribbon cutting ceremony when that's open, because Bob Parish was a really good friend of his, really wants to see this, he's really adamant and very excited about this.
Yeah, absolutely, that's our little highlight.
Adrian Run program. They have about two hundred little league registrants this year. It's up from last year. Or which we didn't actually.
We actually, today our parks crew this afternoon assembled all of the hitting tees, pitching machines for Little League. So they were in there assembling all of that stuff today and getting organized and getting ready to disperse here in the next week, so.
You know, a lot of kids that used to play travel baseball, lookouts in their bags, like, they're not doing that anymore, they're playing Little League now. You know, because parents love Tuesdays and Thursday night baseball instead of all weekend. I was one of those parents. It's, 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 you know, people are excited about it, and, and, and then, you know, from a business standpoint, you know, we, you know, I have a lot of people in businesses and we get excited about sponsoring teams and being competitive with ourselves, you know, because no Marx, broom and law, and then, you know, Brad always gets cat neck, you know, and it's always pretty cool, they always put us in the same division, so it's a.
You just might be on your boat on the weekends, admit it.
Right, no, it's, you know, the Little League program, what, what the board's doing to get the word out there, just from a city perspective, just from a maintaining fields, it's awesome, awesome.
And an update on, so actually today, I met a gentleman from Councilman Hunsucker, he's kind of their lead program designer in regards to, to what we're doing, so he came down today, he just wanted, he has had, he's had pictures and things of that nature, but he wanted eyes on. So he came down today, so we spent an hour down at a multiple going over all that. He reported to me today, there are, we are now over eight hundred responses to the survey.
Also caught up to trend.
So. So we had a ton of input, and so we'll actually be starting some Zoom meetings this week with a lot of stakeholders, school districts, the IMCA, parents, folks like that. So we'll be, the next, actually tomorrow and Wednesday, I'm sitting in on meetings all day. That's the next step is bringing stakeholders in. Giving them kind of a pitch essentially their ideas, and then obviously just getting feedback and, you know, the wants and needs of these stakeholders and users. So that's gonna be happening over the next two days.
One, one quick question, and then, so where are we at with the seasonals when it comes to like, because I know we had an issue last year having seasonals to maintain them. Where are we at with that? I mean, you know, you had a job fair, I guess.
So, for total attendance. Oh, not just for us.
The whole thing.
The whole job.
Oh.
Whoa.
Not just us, oh.
Because I told you privately, I mean, this is one of those things where the weather breaks and then, you know, this is the showtime for your department. I mean, it's, if you was put on stage and then we get, we'll get emails, matter how well the, how well you guys do, it's like, you're gonna get emails. I mean, you've got so much acres to cover and, and just having the bodies there is, is, is concerning to me, because you know, these guys are running around, we have to contract it out, that's fine, you know, but I, I think I'd rather like to take pride in our own, in our own system instead of having a private sector do it, but I'm concerned with the manpower aspect of it.
So that's been one of my, one of my focuses when I, when I started here was again, you know, looking at how things were, were run in the past, understanding, you know, the labor market and some of the labor issues that the city's had, especially the Parks Department, seeing how so much was contracted out last year. One of my goals, and it's still my goal, is to bring a lot of this work in-house in regards to, to labor that is an issue. One of the things that I've been working on and we're in the process of working on it is trying to raise the wage so that way we're competitive. The market has essentially set a rough rate, we're not there yet, that's what we're working on right now. As Greg said, the, the job fair wasn't well attended, however, I've been putting my feelers out, my connections, our department, our Denny has done well at the cemetery in running a good department, a lot of those guys are talking about wanting to come back. And Jason and I are going to the well with everybody we know, trying to bring people into our department, so that is an ongoing struggle. But it's one that we're just not gonna get on by, so that's an ongoing conversation right now, and how do we bring in more people?
We're hopeful that we'll get some traction with the sixteen, seventeen-year-olds that came out for the first time, that's never done before. Recent times, the problem with that is that they're limited in how many hours they can work. Days work out of each one of them.
They could work five hours, so sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, if they have their driver's license, we're looking at working in twenty-five hours a week, so five hours a day. Because there are jobs and things that can be done by those, you know, so for example, watering flowers, picking up trash downtown around the parks and stuff like that, those are things that we would like to concentrate those younger workers, having them do than having our full-time much more experienced workers work at landscaping, addressing other maintenance needs within the park system. So we're hoping, that was one of the ideas I had, is hey, let's, if we can bring in some younger kids, have them work specific hours and address some of the simple stuff that they can do, get watering flowers, picking up trash, you know, keeping downtown clear. And then that allows for our, for our full-time folks to be out working on major projects.
As far as the wages concerned, our current contract with TPOAM dictates that we can't pay more than twelve dollars an hour for seasonal help. We asked them to sign a letter of understanding making that fourteen, refused. We offered to trade that for a letter of understanding that they had asked for in terms of call and scheduling, still. What I believe they're doing is, we've settled our contract with them. There are two open issues, which were language items that we had requested. One of them is sort of a catch twenty-two situation in terms of being able to go on unpaid leave if you exhaust your leave bank or it forever, basically. And what ends up happening therefore is that you can go, you can exhaust your whole leave bank, you know, this is a disability situation, exhaust your whole leave bank and go on unpaid, and then at the end of the year, you get a new leave bank, so I use up your leave bank again. And so on and so forth, it could go on forever, that was one of the language I was out.
It was like duty work.
Yeah. As they're. Yeah, yeah, they don't want like duty work. So, you know, if you run off on disability many times, we could, we're just calling in sick for some injury. We can bring me back often and heavy light duty work. And so, whereas they have the status quo right now, because these are our open language issues. So what they are trying to do is leverage the fourteen dollar an hour wage to get us to concede on those two issues.
Your first go-in.
Look at that.
What do you got about a thousand ones now?
Thanks, Jeremiah.
It's your top four back.
Okay.
I suppose.
I'll be your top four.
All right, so I did a summary shoot as well, again, it probably looks a little like Will's. Tried to stare away from that, but it looked like it worked out pretty good. So.
Why you said there was gonna be somebody.
Yeah. So Public Works, I'm gonna go through my general fund accounts first, so the one-on-ones, Public Works is one of them. As you can see, there's a difference that we're spending ninety-seven thousand less this year, and that's due to the capital items that I'm requesting, which will be covered by rescue funds. I am looking to, for another employee at DPW, it would not affect the general fund balance because DPW workers are paid for through all the other accounts that, that I manage, so major streets, local streets, solid waste. Stormwater, everything else pays for these, these guys, so it will not hit general fund, but it does show that it comes out of general fund. I'm going into the engineering side, engineering doesn't really have too much cost that come out of the general fund either. It's pretty minimal, there's a difference of three thousand dollars. Street lighting is, oh, that should be a positive fifteen thousand. I'm asking for an additional fifteen thousand this year to do some extra upgrades on our streetlights, just to update them to LED. Yeah, it's a pretty expensive BB gun. Moving on to Major Street, which is major and local street are funded by F51 funds, nothing comes out of the general fund side for these. So there's a huge difference here, and that's last year, oh, this fiscal year, we were, we planned to do Michigan Ave, which is partially a grant-funded project, but it's a one point two million dollar project. So there was a huge amount of fund balance coming out to pay for Michigan Ave. We're still planning on using all of the budget this year, but none of the fund balance, which you can see. Wait, there, we used just over a million dollars last year, and this year I'm not planning to use any additional fund balance. Our fund balance currently sits at roughly two point four million dollars. So we're, we're over a hundred percent funded, but we do have some payments to make yet this year, so that, that number will drop a little bit. But it's good to see that we are over a hundred percent funded, but as, as an emergency fund. But I presented to you guys a, a five-year plan probably two years ago now, and it was very aggressive. And it was hoping to use some of that additional fund balance, which we're, we're going through, so it's working out well. We're paving a lot of streets this year, we've got I think seven that we're doing this spring, and the bids came back really well, so we're gonna do some additional streets as well, so that'll be nice.
Excuse me, Matt?
Yeah.
Do we have a current road rating?
Yeah, actually, last one we did was last May, we can't wait until April first. So, yeah, we'll be doing it, actually like the thirteenth of April, so every year we do it. So next year, our proposed projects, there's money in there for preservation, which is key to keeping our streets looking good. We are also planning on doing Tecumseh, which is a reconstruct, Springbrook, which is a base stabilize. And also looking to do some stormwater improvements such as sewer lining and ditching. Moving on to local street fund, again, there's a, we're spending less this year than we had planned last year. Fund balance currently sits at about one point seven, which is again is over a hundred percent emergency funded, flipping over to the backside. I did use just under a million of fund balance last year, and I'm planning to use about four hundred and fifty this year. And with that money, again, we'll have some preservation projects, we'll reconstruct Mommy Court and we'll reconstruct and base stabilize parts of Salt Scott. And then also, there's some money in, in place for some stormwater improvements.
So, when you're saying the fund, right now the fund balance for local streets is one point seven million dollars, you're saying it can use four hundred and sixty thousand, so that four hundred and sixty thousand will decrease the fund balance?
Yes. Moving on to auto parking fund. We are planning to spend much this year. I think there, there was just capital improvements in the last year that we were not planning to do this year. Our fund balance is currently at eight hundred and thirty thousand, and I think with the, with having such, well, we're, we're planning to do a parking structure at some point, parking has been an issue, and as we continue to see a, an increase in businesses and apartments downtown, parking is gonna continue to be an issue. So at some point, we're gonna look into a parking structure, and they're not cheap. I mean, if we're talking a vertical structure, it's like twenty thousand dollars a vertical spot, so for a hundred spots, you're talking at least two million dollars. So we're, we're trying to save for that at the moment. Well, that number is probably dated, I learned that in college. But we're gonna start looking into that, so luckily right now we have a pretty healthy fund balance, and hopefully that grows over the next couple of years. Solid waste fund, so this is where our trash recycling and compost comes from. Current budget, well, last year's budget was seven hundred and thirty-one thousand. This one point roughly four million dollars is based off of option five, which is based on the totes, the universal access to recycling, yard waste collection, bulk trash every other year in the dumpster at the compost site. So that's why you see that huge difference in the six hundreds, with six hundred and sixty-four thousand. And I think the hope is to put the resolution on hopefully next meeting. And I think the hope is to put the resolution on hopefully next meeting, unless there's more discussion on that.
I don't know what other people have been talked to about, but I've had a lot of people comment that they are not in favor of two totes.
You're not alone.
And that's why I brought it up the last time. And had asked to have more discussion pre-meeting, because that's what I was hearing a lot of.
Option six is looking a lot better. I think if I remember correctly, that's a trash tote and an optional subscription for subscription for recycle.
Just still two totes.
Well, thank you people who subscribe.
Was it $5? That's what I have now.
I will, I will bring up, I just had to meet with something completely non-trash related. But Mayor Baker from Tecumseh had asked to meet with me on Friday. And so I asked him, I said, I'm gonna bring up the trash discussion. He goes, oh, trash makes people mad. He said that way. We literally laughed about it. But, you know, he did tell me that Tecumseh does, so just, just, I wanted to get clearing out what Tecumseh does, at least to kind of have an idea. And they, they got Stevens to agree, but they offer that you can do tote, you know, like they let people like sign up for totes, but there was totes or some don't. And it wasn't mandated. And I said, well, Stevens was okay with that, like you have like almost every other house. And he goes, yeah, because he said where he lives, it is almost every other house has a tote or doesn't have a tote.
And we're talking trash, Andrew.
Josh, I'm just talking trash on this one. And he, because that's all we were kind of discussing at that point. And he did say that, you know, there's been a, they, what they kind of did is they went ahead and took like their residents and took like a quarter and like got totes, you know, thinking that's what was gonna happen. And I mean, that is what happened. And now they're getting closer to the halfway mark, where almost half the residents are wanting the totes for the trash. He goes, you know, and like we talked about it, and he said, yeah, we heard that too about, you know, the totes flying out into the road or this or that, and, you know, things like that happening. He said, one thing that they have discovered in Tecumseh is that the totes are visible. It's almost, he said, it's not necessarily created by a problem, but if they're not putting their totes like, they're all leaving them in front of their garage, or they're out there, like the totes are, it just doesn't always look the best, because some of it, it's just they just didn't have a place to put it. He goes, but the main problem, he said, the only problem, he was not anti-tote by any stretch of the imagination. He said, the only real problem they've had in Tecumseh with the totes is that people don't bring them back up. He goes, it doesn't seem like it's a problem, even with like elderly or other people getting them out. But he goes, the delay on getting them back up. And so, yes, they are blowing over, they are ending up. And he goes, you know, it's not, it's something, you just don't want to keep going out and like trying to get people to bring their totes up. But he said, that's something where it doesn't always make it up for days back up to the houses. So there's totes sitting out for a long time. Just, and I just picked his brain since he wanted to meet with me about something else. I said, well, I'm gonna bring up trash, why, I've got you here. So, you know, just a thought on that. And their recycling is subscription, I'm sorry, subscription as well, like the way, he said it's not mandatory. I asked, well, I asked-
But it's not subscription.
They pay for it.
They pay for it already. So, so the residents-
Yeah, you just go get it, and they don't have a tote, they have a-
A blue thing.
A blue box, like a container, we have the same-
Oh, yeah, that's right. The recycling's like a bin thing.
It's a bin. It's a bin. Of course, I mean, you can look on Nora Street, it's landing, all there's, all my shit is up in those streets. Blows out of my bin. You know, I can, I can recognize it, you know, and it's, everybody else has been the same way. That's the problem with not having a lid. Stuff gets blows out.
I just know that trash is always a contentious contract, always. When Republic lost Stevens, I was going to meetings before I ran the first time, and there were wars back then. I mean, it was, it was packed, same thing. I had a comment, I shared that survey on February 1st on my city commission page on Facebook, and somebody commented six hours ago, and said, for the love of God, just give us trash cans like a normal city. The feral animals ripping open my trash bag, it gets old for the 15th time. So, I mean, it's, it's one of those things where it's like, you know, obviously on record. I mean, our citizens are so used to what they're used to, right? And it's like, it's hard to tier them into 21st century sometimes on some of this stuff. We had chambers packed full of people with marijuana, you know, they thought the city was gonna burn to the ground. And then come to find out, we're selling $2 million of the property, and we're getting several thousand dollars, you know, in the last two years of excise tax money. So if you plan on, if you plan on the agenda next Monday, then I, our next meeting, I'm not gonna be here. So it's gonna be, I would like to be here for that vote. So, I mean, especially if there's, you know, there's split on the commission. So when, you know, when it comes to support, I just know the trash is one of those things where everybody's not gonna be happy. It's one of those things where, you know, in our positions, we're not gonna get 70% happy. As long as you get majority of what, get a pulse on what they want, and just make the best decision for yourself. But trash is always a big contentious.
Well, and you know, and the one thing that has me concerned, and it's had me concerned the whole time, but I did a little bit of research on it, is, and I had brought this up a few times ago, when we first brought up trash, is, you know, I just, we're so, our population here is so heavily, you know, it's the majority are the renters. And so my concern is, you know, this, they already are paying high rent. I mean, it's everywhere in the country, it's not just here. But already paying a high rent, and it can be increased for no reason at all in the state of Michigan by 5%. That's a big hit if you're paying $750 a month in rent, and you could get a 5% increase, because I had looked it up to go in and check, and I would have put it past some landlords to do that. And I mean, that would way overpay for their trash. But I, I just worry, because we're already having this issue with, with these rents being so high and the low income. It just concerns me. I'm not saying it has to be a deterrent, but I'm very concerned that the landlords are gonna raise that rent right away to make up for that. And, and honestly, they can, I look into it, and can to a degree, they can't go crazy with it. But, you know, I just have those concerns as well, and some of those tenants have reached out to me as well, like worried about the same thing. They're very worried their rent's gonna go up. And, you know, I mean, that can't be the end-all be-all, but I'm just saying that that is something else to consider.
Those landlords who are taking section eight rounds can't raise for that. Subway. Market determines the rent. Well, no matter what you wanna say, as a landlord, I'm a landlord, you know, the market determines the rent that you can charge. I can tell you all day that my costs will up, but even though I'm straightening up from somebody else, it's less.
And from where we're at with the 170, if you keep it the same to 2.5, that's $6 a month difference. So is landlord gonna raise your rent $10 a month just because trash is $6 more? I mean, that's, I mean, it very well could be, but that's pretty crappy landlord, in my opinion. It's like, you know, because I'm not forced to buy totes for my, for my units. I have, all my units have totes, because I don't want trash in my yard, so.
Well, and I have a question outside of this even, that, you know, I know we're looking at, you know, you're, you're, you're giving us the one year with Stevens. And I know we had looked at the projected cost, you know, like the increases that were going to come, that their increases were gonna be larger than others, and that over, over that five-year span, they were actually at a higher cost than modern, I do believe. Well, you know, what was the reasoning of going with Stevens? So I'm just curious, I never asked that question, I wonder.
Because modern couldn't provide all the services we asked for. They couldn't provide bulk trash and yard waste was significantly expensive.
I didn't know, I kept needing to ask that and forgot to ask that, so I was wondering, because I was relooking at all the figures.
Honestly, this one, this one's tough for me. But I won't be here also next week.
Although, I think that's fine.
Mr. Roberts, what do you think? And I said we'll have something.
What I want is everyone to have two totes. Is, is what I want.
Well, that's what I have, and that's what I want, but I just-
Is that, is that the best option for the majority of the residents of the area? I don't know.
Keep, keep in mind that this is potentially a seven-year contract. Talking about setting in place what will still be in place in 2030, 30 years into the 21st century. Do we wanna have, it's clear from the survey, and that's a significant sample size, 1,000 people out of the city of 20,000, that's a good sample size.
And Michelle targeted Adrian.
They self-identified as Adrian residence, the vast majority of them, 95% of those, or more. So out of those, take the recycling issue, 66% said curbside recycling was very important. 75% said they'd like to have a tote for curbsides.
With an added fee?
With an added fee. 10% actually do it. And I was, I was telling Commissioner Roberts earlier today, you know, personally, recycling is very important to me. However, I live in a building that, when I'm in town, that doesn't have any kind of, that doesn't have any kind of bin for recycling. And every week I do the same thing. I separate it, and then it comes down to Friday, do you wanna take it to the county? I don't, I want it home, and I throw it in the trash. And that's exactly what, you know, 90% of the people are going to do, unless there's a bin outside their house, in which case, I'll throw it in the trash.
And the people who say they take it to the county, it's like they haven't had the awesome service of pulling it out to your curb and sitting there. That's kind of like comparing like the dumpster we're gonna have at the compost site. Out to your curb too, so that's, it's, you don't know what you're missing until you haven't had that service provided for you. So it's, or you've had the option, it's that we haven't paid for it.
I love mine.
Yeah, as I do. And I, and I agree with what you're saying. I just, maybe it'll be one of those things that if we implement it, you know, we'll hear the uproar to begin with. And a year from now, we won't be hearing anything. I, I'm not sure. But, yeah, like, the other one that I've heard a lot about, and I've got my answers prepared for that, is the people who say, well, I put out six bags of trash, and I can't fit six bags in one of those totes. And my answer is, well, probably half of your trash could be recycled, if you wouldn't, you'd have three bags instead of six, you know, so that's-
Between, yes.
Which is exactly what happens at my house.
Volume of those two totes.
I generate three times the amount of recycling inside your trash. No, no issue.
And I, I walked in, I walked in by the recycling center last night, just to check it out, just to see it. And because I don't use it, I know I'm paying for it in my county tax dollars. I know I'm paying it, and I've probably used it six times since it's been there, maybe? I don't know, not very often. But even last night, I mean, what the hours are, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, I think, Friday. Ridiculous, that's what it's posted as. One of the bins was constantly chiming, backed up, and there's garbage laying outside the bins.
Well, half the people think it's a city recycling center, not the county.
And so I would like to think that if we did have bin recycling bins, that maybe that won't be such an eyesore. And if anyone lives by there, I, I couldn't have slept last night, because it's constantly making that ding 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 noise, trying to move the stuff.
By the way, if you look at the comments that people wrote in on the survey, the majority of the negative comments about the county recycling center by people who think it's city recycling.
Everybody wants that. I do, I do have some concerns over, obviously, I mean, I know that we have the elderly, the people who can't do it, and the people who have really steep driveways, and that those are gonna have to be addressed. And we're gonna have to make, we're gonna have to make it okay for some.
Can I break in here for a minute? Can I say something? At the la, the last time we discussed this issue, I gave you two examples of Clinton and Celine, who have used this program for more than eight years and don't have trouble with it. And I understand that change is difficult. We may have to take some, some lumps in the beginning. But I gave you two examples of communities who have been successful with this. So, and they're, they're examples of communities that are right around us. So I, I didn't hear exactly what you said, Mary, as far as what some of your concerns with, but I, I do agree with Gordon when you say that, you know, if most people would just utilize the recycling option, you wouldn't have as much trash.
I believe that.
My concerns were for people who can't use the totes, who have those steep driveways, who really don't have a good place to put them, and then they're sitting out in front on their driveways. Does that, you know, does that help our light issues very much? If that's the only place they can, can put it?
Well, I think that, I think that people are using that as an excuse. Almost everybody has a backyard, okay? Right away, everybody wants to put up their hands and say, I can't, I can't, I can't. When, I think if you just think about it a little bit, you can. Also, I was very happy with what the gentleman from Stevens said last weekend, that they are willing to work with people who are disabled or have an issue, whether it be a health issue, or maybe it is that crazy steep driveway. But this isn't the first time that they've run into these issues. So, you know, I, and I had sent Greg a text earlier in the week saying, you know, if we can get all of this in writing with Stevens, I just don't think we should have a big issue with it, other than people wanting to slam us in the very beginning.
I, I think you're right, man, about that. I guess the question I was gonna ask, though, and I was gonna point to the fact that, I'm a king from the Stevens representative, that all the city has to do is tell them who needs to use trash bag. But how are we gonna administer that, administer that? How, have we thought about what it's gonna take to compile that list and give the notifications? And how many people are gonna have taken advantage of that? I mean, I'm-
I talked to Dustin about the sales stuff for last meeting, and I asked how much he charged for trash in South Beach. And he goes, he's telling me, you know, when they went to totes, they gave the option of, you can, or you can have totes, and you don't have totes. And then he got to the point where, you know, got, you know, as they went along, they wish they would just mandate the totes initially, instead of this easy, because now people are, you know, still comfortable with bags, and they're not, you know. So he said, you know, in his experience, you know, that, that if they would have mandated totes right away, instead of just having, giving people the option, like, you know, like Tecumseh, but South Beach is a lot bigger than Tecumseh, so. So I'm a little different, so, different community too. But that, if you mandate it right away, he goes, you know, we got a few squawks, people were upset a little bit, but then they got, but then they really liked it, because again, it makes, you know, I don't know if people put their bags now, like if you put them in the garage, just sit them in there, or what do you?
You gotta, you have to put forth a much greater effort to keep your bags secure than you do your tote. Your tote can sit outside, it's made to sit outside, and be secure, and you put all your trash right in there. Where if you're putting it in bags, you're either leaving them in your house, or maybe putting them in your garage, if you don't have any rodents that get in your garage. But it's an inferior solution, having it in the tub.
And really, it's, it comes down to math, it's $6 and change a month difference. You know, we keep the same way we are, or we go to the universal recycling and totes. So, I mean, it's, the cost may look like it's bigger, I'm getting double cost, but we already, they're already gonna pay more anyways, even if it's the biggest one we have, so.
May to answer your question, Gordon, no different, I want that to have to do with recycling, easier, because there'll be a few of those.
So what if you had something like you had a, somebody that suddenly is gonna be, um- Disabled for, you know, a, a small amount of time. Maybe they had, they had a car accident or, you know, something. Something like happens, like pops up like that or hits or, yeah, something like that. How, how would they go about, is that something that Stevens would be willing to do as well? Like that they haven't already been preset?
Yeah, give us a call. We'll put you on the list. We'll send it to Stevens. If it's a couple of months, we'll tell Stevens it's a couple of months. If it's longer, we'll say it's for a year. It's what we do with recycling. It's really not. That bad. It's just, it's a one time thing usually. And whoever's going to need it in two months is going to need it right off the bat.
But even then, how would they walk their bags out there?
Right, I mean.
Well, yeah, I mean.
I mean.
Truth be told, it's always, almost always going to be easier unless you're putting your bags in the trunk of your car and run to the curb. Always going to be easier.
The tote rolls easily. It's light. It's durable. I mean, it's.
One of, and I'm, I have a tote. But one of the things we have discovered, we have a one lane driveway. If we don't park correctly on tote morning, we have to move our cars to get the tote down the driveway because they are wider. We can't park in the middle of our driveway and put the tote on our wheel it down. There are, there are concerns. There are. Do I want two totes? Absolutely. Is everyone going to want them? Nope. Is it for the best of the city? But I'm not going to be here, so.
Well, I reckon we'll probably put it off over the next week.
By the way, we shouldn't have to do that. We should be able to make a decision. That's what we're here for.
Yeah, those have implications for the budget that we need to adopt, but we hope to adapt at the next. We're not going to go with option five and Matt has to change all the numbers.
And Mayor, if you're hearing something, I mean, you hear a lot more than we do because you're the mayor. I mean, so you get a lot more calls and emails and messages, I'm sure, but. Uh, my, my thing is, and we're likely to make decisions and. Have to make everybody happy. It's the way it works. You're going to make the best conscious decision for the majority of people in the city.
This is harder than chickens.
And let me say, let me say that if somebody is moving into our city for the first time. They're going to, they're going to be impressed that we have totes and we have totes for recycling. So I think we need to keep that in mind.
Well, and keep it, and you need to keep in mind that you're not, again, this contract isn't just for the people who live here this year. This contract is for the people who are going to live here in five years. And, you know, those aren't going to be all the same people that are here today. Are those people in five years going to expect this level of service? Or are we going to look like a backward community if we don't have it? One day, look and make decisions about moving here versus come see your Clinton or Celine.
I just got to say. It's not helping the cause. It's W L E M plays their interview with you every single day about trash in the morning. So everybody that listens to that is hearing it every single morning because I heard every day I'm getting ready for work. So that's why. Yes, they've been playing it over and literally that with the point hill. That's what, that's why a lot of people are here today.
The other Saturday morning, she wasn't doing us any favor either.
Yes. So just so you know.
I said, all I said was I think.
Oh, I know. They just keep bringing out, they just keep bringing it out. So I'm.
Someone is doing this. What did that we spent?
Yeah, I started listening.
By the, by the way, the only people called while I was on the radio were old ladies who just wanted to have to will the tote out. None of them said anything about not wanting to recycle. I haven't said anything about anything except I think it's going to be hard for me to will the tote out. Or I have a hard time.
Well, I, and I go, and I just have a sidebar with Matt, just to confirm, is the savings to the residents. In our general fund for the, the old trash. Eight thousand dollars a year is a lot of money, up to eighty. Sixteen, five to eighty thousand dollars a year that we've been spending on both.
Hundred sixty one thousand. But we spent a lot.
Right, but if we do that.
Oh, that'd be on there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money when you look at what we're asking for. That's. Extra firefighter, medic.
It's a progressive move. It's a move that again gets into the twenty first century again. Um, it's, it's a bad look. I mean, I, I. You go on Tuesday driving up Main Street, there's just bags and bags and bags and.
And I am not kidding you. From the last meeting, we talked about this.
Kelly told me.
On my drive home on Stockford Drive, there was a cat eating out of a, at nine o'clock, a cat.
All the time in my.
Maybe not a beneficial, but I did walk in the next morning. And I walked by it and guess what? He ate a chicken bone frozen.
Yeah. I know mine have broken open all the time.
I'm like, I can't, I can't make this up.
That's true.
It happened. I didn't take pictures because it was dark. And the camera arrived.
Or Dane, Dane told me this. Dane also told me, he tried and tried and tried and tried and tried years ago. To go to all totes and, and, and then again, there was a trash contract came up. And people started lobbying commissioners, citizens started emailing and, you know, and they didn't have the foresight to see. Because I think eventually they're all going to go to, I mean, there, these trash vendors aren't going to, they're not going to do it back anymore because it's.
And that's what Mayor Jen Creek and I talked about. He's like, they all want to go to the arm. They all, they all want to reduce how many people they are putting on these trucks. Like. He said in, I can't see it not becoming a thing anyways eventually. Like that's exactly the conversation we had. He said that everybody's going to go that way.
And he lives on state. He has an alley. He's talking about if he gets, you know, because he recycles, he says, you know, drive, take his tote out, but it's just, it looks better for the city. It cleans it up. It's a better, it's a nicer look and you don't have animals ripping the bags over.
Why don't you ask him why he puts a trash bag out every day? He puts what? He puts a trash bag out.
No, wait, he doesn't use the tote.
Well, then, you know, case in play. If you had to tote, if you had to have the tote, you just. You know, and then it lies.
Right. We're going to have enough, we're going to have a quorum next week.
It should have five.
Kelly on the air. Doug won't leave. You may want to have a conversation with one of your commissioners.
Trash meeting tonight.
Sorry, Matt.
Well, I've got one, one, one month that I look over and it's building maintenance fund and it's, uh, we're looking at spending a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars less this year. Uh, just for capital improvements. Uh, one thing I did fail to put on here is, um, the capital improvements that we have in the building maintenance fund. Uh, which, uh, Chief of Police mentioned that ten thousand dollars for flooring. Um, Chief Massengill is asking for ten thousand dollars to paint and call the interior of fire, uh, fire station. We're asking for fifteen thousand dollars to make an addition on the mechanic day at D P W. To allow us to work on fire engines, uh, more efficiently. Uh, and then also fifteen thousand dollars to extend the chambers dais. Um, and then the dais.
Oh, we should.
Like when we have D D A.
This D D A has those too.
Too many members to set up that. There are some to be handled.
And then, um, the rescue funds were asking to purchase a one ton truck and a new vehicle for.
For who?
My position.
Position.
Yeah.
What's wrong with the weight of speed?
Not necessarily you.
Well, I mean.
You cut that one.
Yeah. Uh, the escape, actually the mechanic said that the frame is rusting out. It's been welded once. It's needed welded again. So it's probably.
I'm afraid he's going to fall through. This is statal sewers and.
I'm shocked last year because I go see, oh, I see it back there. Man, that's.
I mean, I, I want to make a better, better picture of the guys before I needed something.
Leadership.
Taking somebody your big screen TV job.
I got a good deal on that. That is all I had and that's anyone else had questions.
Well, in regards to trash, we're back to number five and put it on the.
You guys in the ball next week?
Got a ball on.
I got, let's just.
We still have public hearing next week or next week.
Well, we always have public hearings to vote right there.
This will be, this will be to set up the public hearing for the eighteenth and then you'd have the hearing.
We would really like to not bring the budget down to the wire and.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, I mean, yes, we're next week, but you know, if you guys are going to vote now, I got my, my pro, my, my pro tote people, I got to get them here. Let me, I'm aboard.
I'll vote.
Oh, I can rally troops.
Well, that's just it. And I do recognize that we hear always the negative and negative.
Well, that's true.
People with, you know, the six hundred some that said they would use it.
And the thing is, you know, like, like, picking back and out, like, like, you know, I'm glad, I'm glad Michelle responded to that when we got the one evening about the surveys, like. Because you can target areas, like not, not just making a blanket survey. I mean, she targeted the city and, and so. I'm glad you get clarification on that. And it's like, you know, a lot of, as I said, a lot of misinformation about it, you know. You know, of the week, last weekend, not the weekend before our meeting, our last Breland meeting. It's crazy. So he's like, don't lie. It's like, you know, that it's not going to work with me. I'm going to call you out and tell you're lying, you know, and we know those media entities. Uh, that, that, you know, they're lying, but and you clearly loud it up. It's like. Don't just say we're going to make you pay for tote. I mean, because the survey said that people don't support it, you know, even with that fee. So.
You know, and, and the one thing to take into consideration, no matter what, going forward is that the one. Heavy comment that I have got, that I've received, um, especially from the aging population. Is that we don't check the website all the time. We're not on social media that much. We didn't know this survey, like we wish we had known, like we have internet, we would have gone on and done it, but we didn't actually know this was going on. I don't know if that's true straight up. I'm just telling you, that's what I've heard a lot. Um. So they're like, you know, we would have not voted for this. So I was like, well, a lot of people did, so I don't really know who did, you know, but. But I am hearing that comment and, you know, this is more your traditional and I know it's the way we always run it where we throw things into water bills and I've tried to explain that makes it, you know, much more expensive when we throw things into water bills, but they're like. We would have been notified and, you know, if we had known if it had been in newspaper, it had been on the radio, you know, like to do this trash survey. I don't really know if that would have changed anything. I'm being very honest, but I'm just telling you what I have received as feedback. Uh, when it comes to the survey.
I didn't know, I didn't know. And people who used to rely on the paper, we just can't anymore.
Well, but that's the beauty of samples.
Yes.
Presumably it's a valid sample size, an equal number of people on this side didn't know and equal number of people on that side.
There you go.
Result is the same.
And I, I have forwarded this to Greg, but, um, I have friends who live in Toledo and they have kept the Shubert's website weekly. Newsletter to anyone and everyone. It's an email newsletter that gets sent out every Wednesday, Wednesdays with Wade. And, um, Norm always forwards it to me and it just has just all kinds of information and sometimes it's heavier and some weeks it's not very heavy. But that's something we might want to consider. Something like that where, you know, if we can get a list or if people are willing to sign up or an email. You know, and then we just send out information every week. And I know it's coming every Wednesday. Here's the interval for the city.
We currently have that on the website, actually. People can sign up.
Shane, Shane used to do that. Shane used to have a blog on a website every, you know, at least once a month. He'd write like little. Bio of like what's going on and, and about once a month. He did that for a while. So.
One from Wade is pretty good. I mean, I, I read it every week.
Is it posted on the city website? Is that?
I don't know. I get an email to me, so I'm not sure where it's posted. It might be, I just never looked.
I mean, most everything we do, like this meeting, we were criticized for not being transparent because this meeting was a big secret. Well, it was better posted on the website. If any, anybody who really cares about what's going on in the city, I'll be checking the website.
Yeah, but are they, you going to think you're going to check it every day to see what's coming up? Probably not. And just throwing it out there, it's an action, something that, you know, I have thought about for a while.
No, I don't think it's a bad idea.
Yeah, we need to do a better job of communicating in different ways.
Maybe it's something they sign up for.
Today is a good, you know. People say, well, you know, I didn't, we didn't really think about what they said. Yeah, we, 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 I have thought about this. Entire week about the trash issue and talked to people and emailed with people, Facebook message, but I estimate not to. So, yeah, we do take it into it. We do take it into it.
But the board is balanced without use of one balance? All right.
Yeah.
Some possible ARCA funds left?
Motion to adjourn.
I have to do public comment.
Oh, yeah, we have to.
So we're good. I'm going to move on to public comment. Are we ready? All right. At this time, we will have public comment. Just to reiterate, there's a three minute time limit. For the record, please state your name and address.
Scott Marvin San Creek Highway. There was a house fire on February eighteenth and Adrian, Adrian Fire Department was unable to respond to the medical call. To my neighbor. It took thirty minutes for an ambulance to show up to help this gentleman while the patient was unconscious. He was, uh, he, while he was, the patient became unconscious while waiting for the ambulance. Addison ambulance came. And then Adrian Township came. So it took thirty minutes. So please support our Adrian Fire and police departments with staff equipment they need to do their job. Thank you.
There are no more public comments. Are there any commissioner comments? May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Report.
A motion by Commissioner Huff with a second from Commissioner Goss. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.